Good evening. I would like to call and order the Monday, June 13th, 2016 public hearing related to Council Order 2016-149, 150, and 151. Madam Park, if you will please help us...
Counselor King.
Present.
Counselor Paul. Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Forrest. Counselor Palucci. Counselor Lee.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Crowe.
Present.
Great. Thank you, Madam Park. Madam Park, if you will please read the Council Order detail?
Yes. Notice of the Public Hearing, 2016-149, 150, and 151. Comcast, Massachusetts Electric Company, and Verizon respectfully request that the City Council grant a location for the purpose to excavate at the public highways and run and maintain underground electric conduits together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as said company may deem necessary in the public way or ways they are in need of referring to.
Great. Thank you. Is there somebody here? The public speaker, Craig. All right. Mr. Shea, good evening.
Good evening, Counselor. I am Joseph Shea. I am the Senior Vice President reporting in town, engineering firm that has been retained by the City of Quincy for the North Quincy High School Public Works Improvement Project. We are here tonight along with Comcast, Massachusetts Electric, and Verizon to seek the grants of location and easements, which will be the next set of works, to the undergrounding of electric utilities on Hunt Street. This is a project that was approved with supplemental appropriation on May 2nd by the Council as part of the North Quincy High School Public Works Project to take the existing poles and put all the power lines of Comcast and Verizon within the Council. So we are here tonight to seek the grants of location and the easements to the project so that that work can commence and complete during the summer while North Quincy High School is not in session.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Shea. Any questions from the Council? Any questions from the Council? Okay. At this point, I would like to ask anyone wishing to speak in favor to come to the podium, state your name and address. If you do not wish to speak but would like to support or oppose, please sign on the sheet at the back of the chamber. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor, in support? Anyone? All right. Seeing no one, one more time? Anyone? Seeing no one, we will close this portion of the public hearing. At this point, I would like to ask anyone wishing to speak in opposition to come to the podium. Anyone in opposition? All right. Anyone wishing to sign? All right. At this point, I will call this portion of the public meeting closed. And, all right. Do we have to do it for all? Okay. So that was on 149. This will be on 150. Anyone? All right. So we'll call the... Okay. All right. So we'll call that portion of the meeting closed. Madam Park, if you'd read the next notice of public hearing.
Notice of the Public Hearing, 2016-152, 153, and 154. Comcast, Massachusetts Electric Company, and Verizon respectfully request that the City Council grant an easement to the city-owned property located by Counselor Harris.
Thank you. I know Mr. Shea spoke already regarding the address of his order. Okay. Anyone in the... Anyone on the Council have a question for Mr. Shea? Anyone? Okay. At this point, I would like to ask anybody speaking in favor. Anyone speaking in favor to come to the podium, state your name and address. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to sign in favor? All right. I will close this portion of the public hearing. At this point, anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to sign in opposition? All right. Seeing no one, we'll call this portion of the meeting closed as well. Thank you. And we will understand what you want to adjourn.
Motion.
All right. Motion to adjourn. I'll leave you in favor. All right. Yeah. Great. Call this portion closed. Thank you. So we signed it two minutes ago. It was two minutes ago. And isn't this where all these are? Well, then I saw it two minutes ago. Okay. I didn't do much against that. Okay. I didn't do what you were using it for. The debt on the...
He over there is a male. That's a male. What's the name of the male? He was a cave. A cave. Yes, the silver. Every else is a male. But some are males. Yep. Only one is a female. Yep. 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 Next is a boy. Yep. 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 Can I tell you?
That works. Yeah. It's beautiful.
It would really support. The U S team. Yeah. 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 Oh, really?
It's on the tab.
It's on the tab.
Oh, I would count it. It would be a man. One, yeah. That's, that's...
That was...
I do. Limb over.
No.
Can I guess which limb? That's a limb, right?
You can pick it up. It's true.
Really?
He wrapped it. Thank you. Yeah. We have more.
That's great. It's killing me.
Can I just...
Yeah. Nina, I thought that would be... Yeah. That's a bad one. Okay. Thank you.
The posture is real. I have to add more. Yeah. Yeah. So the next day I'm going to block. I'm getting... I'm going to take my block. Something, again. Something I've got something for those. Right? Yeah. Everybody ready? I'm going to get rid of this one.
From the meeting of the Finance Committee, June 13th, the order. Madam Park, if you'd be so kind as to call the votes.
Counselor King.
Present.
Counselor Paul. Counselor Ben.
Present.
Counselor Hughes. Counselor Forrest. Counselor Lee. Present. Counselor Palucci.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Paul.
Present. We need to have a forum before we get into this night's agenda. Just like to read for the record the open meeting law, which is as follows. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or visual recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting during any meeting. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. So just in terms of like setting the, uh, the rule of engagement for this evening, we will have presentations by departments on a particular agenda item. Just note that there will be no votes taken here this evening primarily due to our request for additional information. I know that there was some questions about when the information hit the, uh, you know, email boxes here at the Council, so I'll include myself one time just to digest the information, but would love this to be an interactive forum. And I understand that some of the partner heads are here with numbers to back up the ask. We just asked that maybe submit that to the floor of record as well as maybe send us an email on that so we have time again to, to digest. I believe Mr. Kavanaugh was going to begin. Mr. Walker?
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Through your comments, the 11 orders before you tonight represent just under $20 million, which will end up being a little bit more than $18 million in general fund borrowing because of the Community Preservation Committee approved project that is included in this package. I'd like to, on behalf of the Mayor, apply two general policy rationales that are at the core of these financial orders and the goal of this capital plan. The first is financial, and the second is perceived, although they are definitely interrelate. They are both products of discussion with this body over the course of the last several months and even years. From a financial perspective, what's before you tonight represents a small fraction of all of the city's needs. Those needs from roads, buildings, equipment, to parks and facilities, the likely amount to more than $300 million. Move help line here tonight represents several months of work. To now that request, it crossed to $100 million, then to $60 or $80 million, and finding out under $20 million. This is not by any means, as I've mentioned, addressed all of our needs. What it does do is provide a tangible approach that if a vote questioned, within our needs, plenty of room to spare, choose for Kavanaugh. We'll elaborate on that in a minute. On some of the components, there will be additional requests as the plan evolves. For example, will be ruled, we believe, to be a two, a good two-year assessment of our vehicle needs. In other cases, it remains intention to incorporate future funding for this plan to the general operating budget, like we've mentioned before about roads. That remains the plan as we move forward in the coming years, particularly when we retire the snow and ice deficit funding situation. The second policy directive relates to how this plan is packaged before you within 11 separate orders, all relating to a specific project or a specific separate project. As those of you who were here in 2011 remember, we proposed a capital plan at that time, and the Council approved it. During that deliberation and in the months and even the years that followed, in the subsequent time, there was some concern that the language in that authorization, which was for a blanket $25 million, did not specify to a precise enough nature exactly where elements would be allocated, and provided too far, too much of a level of flexibility to the administration. After a number of discussions with Council, both in this forum and outside of it, mayors decided to move forward with an approach to drill down to a follow-on level, follow-on detailed level of specifics for each project and each set of project. Through this plan, this request, a number of potential projects, and we seek seed money to begin citing feasibility and design, which will help us get to a level of engineering analysis where we can return to the Council for a final design and project appropriation. Through this process, the Council will be asked to authorize individual projects on a case-by-case basis rather than wholesale. We believe this will provide the Council a real level of oversight and a larger role in planning of these projects heading forward. Policies demonstrated in potential plans include public safety headquarters, new animal shelters, flood relief seawalls, and a number of future traffic, including environmental numbers. What you won't see in this plan is funding requests that are any requests relative to potential acquisitions that are part of any, of, part of any larger project that's concluded in the plan. Based on the concerns raised by a number of members of this council administration, we will perform the due diligence required to reach final proposed prices for the acquisition proposals and then submit those to this body for approval again on a case-by-case basis. I'm going to hand this over to Mr. Kavanaugh. We'll discuss the financial details of the package and city positions within this borrowing. We'll talk about this, but it's worth reemphasizing that by using almost any metric, it gets almost any other community in this common, it is among the lowest debt burdens of any community in the state. With that, if you have permission, let me turn it over to Mr. Kavanaugh.
Mr. Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors, prior to discussing the individual categories that make up the requested appropriation for the C I P, we thought it would be beneficial to address the overarching question that confronts you as a counsel, being asked to vote for this authorization. The basic question is one of affordability. Can Quincy afford these purchases? Are we borrowing too much? The short answers are yes, we can afford the C I P plan, and no, we are not borrowing too much. The verification of those statements are in the numbers themselves, and I'll go into those briefly in a moment. But beyond the numbers, we have received a letter as requested by the Council Chairman from our bankers regarding the authorization. And I quote from a letter from Cinder McBurney we received last week, quote, "There is no reason to think that the city can't afford an additional $18 million of debt for C I P. The various debt models that the city has been considering conclude that very amount or more of prospective debt, and rating agencies are aware of the city's prospective debt plans and have factored that into the current ratings." I should point out that Cinder made it a point that bankers don't offer opinions as to whether the debt should be taken out. And she also emphasized that letters such as this are not usual, and it's not something that bankers, bankers often do. She did make an exception for us in this case. She cited the fact that she had testified in front of this counsel just a few weeks ago, so she really considered the letter an extension of that, and we appreciate it. But she dropped a strong hint not to ask for this in the future. Affordability. The formal financial policy regarding debt service and capital improvement plan, which is both endorsed and in effect co-written by our office and Cinder's office, maintains that we have debt below a range of 6% to 7.5% of that year's current operating budget, that being $276.9 million. Now, the above slide shows that that cap, the outer range, in our projected debt service before approval of this authorization. Policy is a benchmark utilized by cities with the highest credit ratings, and we are below that benchmark now. We will remain below the benchmark next year until when the C I P funding is put in place, and we will remain below the benchmark in future years after future authorizations as our formal policy publicly states. Hope you heard endorsement by you on that. Project capacity. Quincy's capacity to borrow and fund additional projects will expand in the coming years. The summary of capital debt reveals that the availability of future project funding beyond the C I P plan will grow significantly in the future years. The last column on the debt schedule that was handed out to you last week shows the availability of projects in the upcoming years, and it grows dramatically. Forward-looking. As current debts are paid off, and these represent previous year bonded projects, the city has afforded more capacity for new capital investment. In combination, as our economy grows and our budget grows, we can take on more projects and stay within the fiscal guidelines as well as maintain a top credit rating. In conclusion, all of this and more is possible while the city stays within rating agency advisable guidelines, stays within the city's own stated guidelines, we stay within the benchmarks established by our bankers and through them the bond buyers, and in short, we stay within all known industry standards. Now additionally, I'd like to point out that issuing bonds for capital improvements is not the sole source of funding for capital projects. We have three other substantial sources that we utilize. The MSBA has contributed $129 million to projects in Quincy since its inception in 2002, done incidentally under a treasurer who is a former city council, outstanding program. Also, the C P C, the Community Preservation Act, contributed $17,900,000 since its inception and vote. And the hotel motel tax adds an additional $7 million. In total, those three other sources contribute $154 million to the effort. And last but not least, I'd like to cite some comps that we do at budget time as well as tax rate recap time, and they help you visualize what Quincy's standing is in relation to other cities. We've used these similar groupings in the past, and as you can see, and these are, these are not alone, multiple dozens of these. Cindy's Quincy's in a very, very good standing, which is one of my names. is one of my names. That concludes the, I guess that's the end of the beginning. We can get into the individual components.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kavanaugh, and I appreciate your willingness to go up and make what that's for in the finance committee and go up and work with Cinder to get, you know, the comparable, always back up those memo from her. I'm just kind of curious, from my own perspective, I heard you say that she kind of frowned upon the issuing memos as we go forward.
Well, when we asked her if we could get her opinion right, her knee-jerk reaction, bankers don't give opinion letters, they do. CPAs do opinion letters, rating agencies give you a rating, and it's really the rating we should go on. If we're AA+ , that tells you we're in very good standing and we can add to the debt. It's outside the norm for her to go to the active writing a letter, but she did do it for us. She just wanted us to, she wanted to stress that this is not the norm.
No, I understand, and I can appreciate that explanation just from a professional level as we chatted about during the finance committee budget handing as well as offline. I believe I'm speaking to my colleagues and they correct me if I'm wrong, but it's the intention of this body to remain engaged in some capacity with the financial model as we go through, you know, the evolution of various, whether it's capital improvement plan or downtown, and respect it and know that you probably talk to her much more frequently than we do, so we just want to keep that communication open.
Absolutely.
So however that works out.
Well, I think you'll find that she's willing to come back here before the council has requested, and I don't think that would be a big time to time.
The council?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, in relation to specifically this banker, but she is our bond consultant, correct, for the city of Denver?
She's our investment banker, correct.
She's your investment banker, but she references various debt models that the city has been considering. I'm guessing that she's been doing it, folks within the municipal management or whatever in the mayor's office have been participating in that, correct?
We've had a lot of folks, essentially, who've, correct.
And so in the sense she's here to revise specifically on, it seems, the impact of prospective debt, correct?
She's there to revise that there's no reason for us not to issue additional debt based on our current debt ratio.
But she's offering basically, for lack of a better term, an opinion suggesting that that's a fact.
That we qualify and have no reason not to.
Right, and so she's not telling us, she doesn't, I just want to be clear because there's a real feeling there sometimes that we're getting this a little bit filtered, and if there's debt models that are being considered, she's, again, providing a consult in relation to that, it'd be good to hear that here, okay, from. I don't think the last presentation quite measured up to an explanation of models that you're considering in relation to what you're proposing here to a city. And, I mean, I understand it's not her job to tell us whether or not, you know, we should authorize certain projects. I think I can understand the existence of that, but I think, I understand what the chairman's frustrations with it about is, is the sense that here she's the city consultant, she's helping inform these debt models, and it might be informative, particularly in terms of what's specifically being proposed, that, I mean, number-wise, not project-wise, how those models are working, so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I did want to come in specifically.
Thank you. Thank you, council. Anything else for Mr. Kavanaugh? Councilwoman.
Thank you. I was actually going to ask some similar questions to Council Pen, but perhaps take it a step further. It's surprising to me that a bond consultant doesn't want to consult with us in writing so, like, who would comment on whether or not it's advisable to take out debt if not, I'm sorry, not bond counsel, but our banking consultant? If not her, who would be consulting with this body, the city council, as to the advisability of taking on new debt and what impact that would have on our budget and our fiscal constraints moving forward?
As I said, granted very briefly, the verification for issuing additional debt is in the numbers themselves. What are our ratios before? What's our capacity afterwards? And going forward, do we stay within the ratios? Because those ratios are benchmarks of the best communities, the highest ratings, excuse me, used. So if you're below that capacity, it shows you can take on more debt, do more projects, and still be within a safe range, which is an industry model.
And so where do we get those? Where do we get that information?
We can give you the exact ratios for where we are. The ratios that were shown on the graphs are where we are right now.
Right.
One of them shows where we'll be if this is approved by you for additional authorization. We're still below those caps. We still have the capacity for more.
And who tells, and who tells us that we are?
The numbers tell us. The numbers adding up to the debt we currently have, you add on the debt we're asking you to authorize. In combination, the debt ratio is the debt to the operating budget for that year. A second ratio, I didn't go in, there are literally 30 to 40 different ratios you could use.
And who's analyzing these ratios?
We analyze them in conjunction with the investment bankers as we're contemplating doing a plan like this.
Okay, so what's, tell me what that process is like when you're in consultation with the investment bankers? What's the?
We meet with them, we talk about what it is we may be funding, what the potential total ask is, and then we scale it back to what's reasonable before we present it to you.
And that's based on these different ratios?
The ratios are part of the parameters. The ratios are what we want to stay within. The city's needs are what the city's needs are.
Right, so when we're asking our investment banker on the advisability of debt, we're not asking her whether or not we actually need a new fire truck?
Absolutely not. She doesn't give an opinion on whether it should.
No, I understand that. So we were asking her to comment on the thing that she is working with you on, and I guess I'm just unclear as to why there's an issue with her providing this body the same type of analysis that she's providing to you in prior meetings?
She has no issue with that. They usually don't issue it in the form of a written letter for, before a council. When she came to testify, if that was a night where we had more specifics already in front of you and in front of her.
It would have been nice all around if.
She could have.
If you were asking her to put some debt, if someone had clued her in, so, I mean, when was that? Four weeks ago? So in the four weeks is the first time that the administration has presented her with any type of capital improvement budget to talk about debt?
No.
All of this has come together in four weeks?
It's been an ongoing conversation, but the actual plan being put before you tonight wasn't finalized until within the last four.
So at that meeting, we asked her what were the considerations, and she said that she wasn't aware of any amount. So at that time, four weeks ago, the administration was going back and forth with her on amounts and working different models?
Not specific amounts, just ranges, just possibilities. We've had discussions with her very openly for all the years I've been here, and what I understand for decades before with Cinder.
It's just concerning to me that someone doesn't want to put something in writing. That tells me that they don't want to stand behind what they're saying. I mean, that's what I get. And if that's not the industry standard, that's fine, but I would like to know who it is that we should ask for something in writing from, if not our consultant? You know, who is it that would better be putting this material in writing for this council to make informed decisions about taxpayer money?
My reply to that, council, is that I feel Cinder's gone as far as she feels she can go in saying that Quincy's well within its capacity to take on the additional CIP debt that's being asked for in the authorization. After that, you look into the credit rating agencies. We were just upheld at AA+ last week in the market. When we went to the market, we had some of the GANs actually funded 1% interest, which is phenomenally low and reflective of our credit rating. So it's the market that's giving you your opinion.
Yeah, the market only gives us their opinion after we do something. So if the market says, no, Quincy, you messed up, we're going to knock you down in bond rating, it's a little late for us to then to say, oh, well, we didn't mean to do it. So that's why it's important to get someone who understands that field better than this body does to consult us about what effect it's going to have in bond markets, what effect it's going to have with our credit rating essentially.
Our credit rating will stay the same. The authorization for the CIP has already been factored into the rating that was issued last week. A range. They knew that we were coming before this body with roughly this amount of authorization. They factored that in. We have the credit ratings calls. They go on for an hour and a half. They ask specifics about all aspects of city financing. Some of it was the CIP. They ask about stabilization, bullpen, vacancy rates in the market buildings. They thoroughly investigate the status of the city at that moment.
So what are the various debt models that the city's been considering?
We focus on two main debt models. One is the debt-to-budget ratio, and the cap on that is 6% to 7.5%. The other is a total debt issue to equalized valuation. So we would be looking to stay under $300 million with the equalized valuation at $12 million. We're well within that one as well. If I had done graphs on that, it would tell the exact same, not the exact, virtually the same story by a graph.
Why do we use those two?
Those are the industry favorites, standards, the ones that were suggested to us. DOR is a favorite of the debt ratio to budget. The banker is more favorable of total debt to equalized valuation.
And debt-to-budget ratio, is that something that we have in the material before us?
Yes, it is. It's in those graphs, and it's also the, one of the stated policy, formal policies that I put for you, the sixth, I think, consideration.
And I don't think, in the graphs that you just showed, is that what you're saying?
In the graphs, yes.
Okay, but, so I didn't see the parameters. You compared us on the communities, but I didn't see the.
Yeah, there's a, which one is there? Three. I think it's slide three, debt-to-budget service with CIP. I see that graph. Also, the very first one is where we are prior to this authorization. That would be the debt-to-debt capacity, the first slide. That's the first slide there.
Sure, no, no, I see that. I see the effect that it, that the debt has, but I'm, see, I guess I'm not being clear or being more confusing than I am. There are certain ranges, there are certain ranges, I suspect, that Cinder wants us to stay within so that our.
She wants us to stay under the cap of 6.5% to 7%.
Okay, I didn't see that in any of the graphs.
If you refer to the.
Compared it to other communities, but you didn't tell me what the, what the point is that's essentially the max. Mr. Walker's waving.
That's scheduled, yes. That's scheduled, the far right column, that's project availability as prior year's projects get paid off. That's the amount that would be available, and we would still be within our caps.
Right. Where is the, but what I'm asking for is, where is the analysis of what the bond ratings look for? You said DOR likes to use one, and the rating agencies like to use another. So where is the information as to what those two?
I guess that would be in our credit rating report that's issued by Standard and Force.
Right, so that's our credit rating on what we previously borrowed.
And future borrowing as well, as a snapshot of where we are at this point in time, as well as our future outlook, past history.
So you have those numbers in this presentation, but without the quantifying parameters, it's difficult to see, you know, if you tell me the credit agency, say, you have to stay within 6% of debt-to-budget ratio, and we're at 5.9 or we're at 3.2, that helps me quantify where we're at, where we would be at if we approved this debt versus what the credit rating agency would like to see us at. But I don't know what the credit rating agencies would like to see us at. I don't know what the DOR would like to see our total debt to equalized valuation. I don't have that information, right? Before me right now? Through you to Mr. Walker.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, councilor, and again, I know we're going to continue this conversation. The big book that was left in everyone's mailbox, that is pretty much a soup of nuts.
This book?
Yes, sir. I believe there are some credit rating reports.
So what do you define parameter of what the credit rating agencies would like to see our debt-to-budget ratio of that or not? Well, I'm not sure either. This is a, you know, it's like a 300-page document table, so it's all good. If a credit agency has a number in a certain model, you've been working on this for four weeks or longer, as you said, Cinder's letter says the various debt models that the city has been considering.
That's what we're talking about, the debt-to-budget.
Right, so I get that, but you only create this graph so that we can justify, we can justify the debt, right?
Correct.
So you're creating this graph to achieve a number, but then what are you comparing that number to? If we don't have.
The number stands on its own. Our total debt number stands on its own.
I quit, I tap out on this one. I just want to know what the credit agencies look at, okay? If their cap, I think you said the debt-to-budget ratio, right, they have a hard cap before you lose.
No, it's a range.
It's a range, okay. So I want to know what that range is. I'd like to know what that range is. I think that's something that our investment banking consultant should tell us. This letter is woefully inadequate to me to justify the debt, to simply say, we don't have an opinion as to whether or not a particular project should be authorized, but we can say that there is no reason to think that the city can't afford an additional $18 million in debt, and then to reference various debt models that the city's been considering without then telling us what those debt models are, I mean, it's useless. There needs to be something more. I mean, I just want to know the parameters that we're working with.
All I can tell you is Cinder did it as a concession, and they don't usually issue opinion letters like that.
Well, I have a problem with that in general too, because it shouldn't be a concession for our consultants to consult with us. What is the way in which she should consult with us? Because we had her here four weeks ago, and she had apparently no information about the capital improvement plan.
Not final information, no.
Well, she didn't discuss, she didn't discuss the various debt models with us at that point. She was discussing them with you, but she didn't have any information for us relative to that. So at some point, someone's got to tell us what the levels are, what the targets are that you want to stay in, as you referred to, what are the ranges? If those ranges exist, they should be shared with us by someone who is.
We can give, I can give you an exact graph of where we are and where we'll be before CIP authorization, after CIP authorization. I can base it all on the equalized valuation to certify by DOR in December. Our equalized valuation is $12 billion. Our debt cap and that ratio, which is favored by the bankers, would be $300 million. Don't go over $300 million with an equalized valuation of $12 billion.
So that's what I'm looking for, is the $300 million and where we are on the grid. That's what I'm looking for.
I didn't use that ratio for this purpose. I used the debt ratio.
And that's fine. I'm not criticizing which graph you chose to present to us, but I'm just saying in general, so if those are the two debt models that the city's considering, or that the city has been considering for the past four weeks, the debt-to-budget ratio and the total debt to equalized valuation, you've told us what those numbers are and would be, which is helpful, but we don't have the information as to what the outside agencies that look at those, favor those numbers, what range they consider to be reasonable or unreasonable. That would be helpful to comparing whether or not what we're doing with our debt is reasonable or unreasonable. You understand what I'm saying?
I do, exactly. And the formal policy that we introduced last week establishes those cap caps, 6% to 7.5%, that's a real number that they're saying stay below. The other one is 2.5% of equalized value, stay below that. So they've given us a hard number, stay below $300 million in total debt, and stay below the 6% to 7.5% debt service. We're below that now, we'll be below it if you authorize this CIP funding, and we'll be below it even further in future years as more previous debt comes off the books. The last column of your debt sheet shows the number of projects that could be funded hypothetically, the room that Quincy would be afforded, and still be within all industry standards.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you, council. Just one question for you. Kind of some loose experience in the bond space and talk about animal support. My understanding is they'll offer their report or their opinion, and that is. My understanding is they'll offer their report or their opinion, and that is obviously a third party, right? Or at least our S and P. They tend to do that after the budget has passed and they can take a look at things that you mentioned, such as your revenue, your OPEB, your expenditures, et cetera. But no offer that opinion, is that from a sequence standpoint?
Are you talking about the rating agencies?
The rating agencies, exactly.
You know, they do their assessments periodically. We just had an assessment by Moody's who we haven't really used in a couple of years.
Is that new?
And we just got the Standard and Poor's. I don't know, I've seen the formal, I saw the graph of it. They upheld the double A plus and gave us a clear path on how to go to the stable of... It was as expected.
And I know that, you know, that's independent, third party research, third party authorization. I know it's public. I wouldn't know how to access it, maybe you can...
We can give, Tom.
I think that would be helpful, which is to kind of connect the dots. And as I mentioned to you at the beginning, I mean, particularly here, in a sentiment throughout, folks just have additional questions. You know, this is a backfiring process. When I hear you speak, I know that you're having the right conversations with the right people every day, managing the process. But just understand, I'm sorry.
Very long ones.
Very long ones, no, and they should be, right? But just understand...
That's the process.
Like from our side of the table, we're not involved with the day-to-day conversations in conference halls and analysts as much as you are. I'm just trying to bridge the communication gap. Counselor, can I know if you have something?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I didn't have so much annoying questions, I wanted to sort of, I appreciate the line of questioning and the colleagues around now. I'm a little more at ease with the ratios and what we're saying financially, especially if it's supported by rating agencies. I am a little confused as to who would be our financial advisor, who would be the person to sign off on making these decisions as to, you know, how much more debt we need on, but I hope that that becomes answered. I do appreciate the work that the American administration has done over the last few months. You know, this is the exciting part where you actually get to, what money to work, where the people see it. And these are people I call every day that have things fixed. These are big improvements that are fast indeed around the city. I think the only problems that I'm having with is that, you know, this is a document that I received a couple of days ago at the end of the day on Friday, and it has numbers that doesn't match this, you know, appropriation for bond authorization. And what I would like to see is how the money is intended to be spent. I can see that generalizations and numbers are great, but I would like to see finer details. I appreciate that, you know, this is a changing process from years ago. I wasn't there years ago, I appreciate the work that's, that's being done now, but I want to see more. Asking for greater detail in that regard. This is a good presentation to start with, but I'll be much more comfortable making decisions when we have all the details for this spending. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My pleasure, Counselor, you may ask any further questions.
Okay, thank you, Nina.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just really quickly to elaborate on my colleague, Counselor Homage's question here. So I did go through this book a little bit and it's from the same company who wrote that letter to us and there are some items in here that brought up some concern for me. I'm just going to read this to you so that you know what I'm looking at. The first one is, sorry, let me back up here. It does have a general summary of where the city stands and then it goes into detail on each of the segments. One of these is under adequate budgetary performance. It says, "We expect increasing fixed costs will continue to challenge budgetary performance despite revenues from the growth." Therefore, management will have to remain proactive in managing year-over-year general fund expenditure growth, particularly if it wants to maintain long-term structural balance. And then goes on to say Quincy lacks a formally documented reserve policy that sets a baseline fund balance. And I think these are the kind of things that my fellow counsel wanted to see here is not just all the positives in what we're seeing under, but what the risks are too, what the real risks are. So you elaborate on what those long-term factors want to be. Because then again, it goes on to say that we believe fixed costs associated with Quincy's long-term liabilities will likely continue to strain budgetary funds over the next few years. So if you can just elaborate on what our plans are to address the long-term debt that we had to...
Excuse me, a little lousy counselor.
I was just wanting to say that you can elaborate on some of the plans that you guys have to address the long-term stuff for balance for, for the funds that we have, for the debt that we have out.
Right, the main concerns by rating agencies are predominantly pension funds, OPEB obligations, very long-term obligations that have a plan for over thirty-five, forty years. So you start on those early, but the resolution is really over thirty to forty years, sustaining contributions and increase of contributions by some of them. The short-term debt issues are all very manageable and in good shape on those and they acknowledge that. That type of commentary is in the credit rating report, so we'll get to that.
Okay, thank you. And you're saying with the, with the plan that you guys have carried out to address the OPEB liability and the pension account? And we're still staying under that six and a half to seven percent?
There is a considerable OPEB pension liability, yes.
No, but what I mean is that you're, you're saying there is a plan to pay that back, a very long-term plan to pay that back?
It's the, it's the same issue that every city in town in Massachusetts is facing. We had people for decades not paying to the system. The people now are paying for themselves, but we have ground to make up. And in the OPEB category, it's long-term health care for retirees that's an issue that, that we're on a pay-as-you-go method right now. We're not contributing as much as we should, so we need to increase the current contributions as well as address what those benefits might be twenty, thirty, forty years down the road.
Right, my question goes back to addressing those contributions and increasing the mountain plan, but we're still going to be staying under that six and a half to seven percent. That is my question.
Yes, I'm not getting all of your questions, Counselor. I'm not hearing you.
You have very good insight into what I'm saying. Yeah, so you're saying that we have, we have a long-term plan to pay into that and to increase the amount of...
Right now, we're on a pay-as-you-go plan. We have to increase funding for those future years.
But do you, we'll see that increase?
We're going to start this year. We have an appropriation for OPEB, it's small, it's a hundred thousand dollars in this budget, but it's the first time we've done that. We have an appropriation for stabilization, it helps overall financial stability, two hundred and fifty thousand. We have a policy to put fifty percent of our pre-cashing every year. That's the policy that was put in front of it June sixth. That will help our, our status with the agencies and our long-term funding plan. But we still have to do more in future years. We take it year at a time. As our snow amortization is paid down, we see that as a way of building more financing for this long-term mortgage.
Counselor, Tom. Mr. Cavan, I think we're counseling a wonderful word, and I'm almost saying, if the target range is, say, in sixty-seven percent of our overall debt burden, does that take into effect the OPEB applied out?
No, it doesn't.
Does not? So there's two, is that what you were trying to say?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Is that, are you comfortable? Okay. Counselor Debona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you put a hard number on the six point five or try and stay on the number percentage?
Six to seven point five.
Six to seven point five?
The range.
Seven point five?
Is the cap, the...
When I asked Cinder, when she was here about a month ago, that exact question, what should we do based on this? And she said, "We should leave this, we're no cap." And leave the flexibility of being able to borrow a bond as much as we can, what does we need? Do, did you guys reconsider that, that theory?
No, in fact, she co-wrote, she actually put the seven and a half percent cap in there. I added the six percent and she wanted to raise it to seven point five, even more practical in this year with the development the city's doing. I think as I stated before, that ratio is a DOR favored ratio. The bankers favor the total debt issue to equalized valuation. So it's a different one where Quincy actually had more rooms. That would be to stay under three hundred billion on a twelve billion dollar valuation for the city, equalized valuation of all the costs.
You know, what we're looking at tonight, we're looking at eleven different appropriations. You go in line by line there. It says right here nineteen million point three two five.
Some of that has a separate funding source that we have. The authorization for general fund debt services, that debt is actually eighteen, I think, five.
Sure, and I know the CPC money in there and the allocation to, we'll get into that when we get it down to the line items. I'm not going to push you on that, but, you know, this is kind of, in my, my personal viewpoint, we're, we're having a dinner. And this is just the appetizer. I mean, this, we're, you guys are going to come back to us for more allocation.
This is just the beginning.
This is just, is this just the salad? Is this just the salad?
This is a...
The answer box?
This is a hors d'oeuvre.
It's a hors d'oeuvre. Because I see when we were near the meal yet, and then we have dessert at the back end of this thing, I mean...
Just the opening, it was the opening five minutes.
Sure. You know, there's a lot of studies in here, you know, feasibility studies, designs, engineering. We're going to get into those a little bit more, but what if we get to a point where we say, well, that's just too much money to be involved? That's, that's too much, we can't get to that range. Are you going to be able to come in with your theory behind that? Hey, listen, that's just too much to fix or that's too much to design or do. Is that ever going to come into a process? Is that ever going to meet that?
I'm not going to come before you and say we can't afford any piece of this because we can afford the entire authorization. This exact amount has gone for the rating agencies as a project.
Sure.
We may be asking for up to twenty million dollars. We came under that. But that was the figure we threw out as, as a model for the agencies to look at when we had ratings calls in the last three weeks. They factored that amount in with their current rating, so they expect us to get approval for a CIP and their current rating, double A plus for us, reflects that. We're within the cap, we're looking good as far as I know.
Can you explain a little bit to maybe just the average viewer, the average person in the city of Quincy? How, when, okay, say for instance, we do approve these eleven items. How does it, how do you walk us through the process of when you're going to start bonding? Is it when you, when you, can you take us through that little process?
Sure, we would start, if you authorize it, we would begin issuing bans on these in fiscal seventeen. It'd probably go to market, I think the Treasury is scheduled to go in July. I think these could be added for bans in July. You can ban pay interest only. We just renewed some bans two weeks ago. We got interest of one percent on our grant in anticipation of virtually free money and two percent on our bans. So we can do that for the first year. None of that would be due in seventeen, you wouldn't even pay a cent until fiscal...
So this is short-term, that's short-term debt?
Yes, short-term.
The non-long, okay.
And then you would go long-term. We would tailor the long-term financing to the assets that you've authorized us to go after. So things like vehicles, smaller vehicles, police cars, pickup trucks, you would only bond those for about five years. Heavier equipment lasts a little longer, heavy dump trucks, large dump trucks, fire agents, twenty years. School buildings, buildings that we're contemplating, you can go thirty to forty years on a building. Roads, thirty to forty years. So it, it, there's a range there and we would tailor or customize the bond financing to go over the useful life of the asset. So we're not paying out the bond money that the asset is projected to not still be in use.
Okay. Those are pretty much, to start off with the questions that I, I kind of, thinking it's a channel, we'll give that.
Thank you. Mark, one final question, just a final question again. Final, this is a final gathering. Right. When you look at this, obviously there's a pay-to-pay in terms of various line items and authorizations. I understand vans, instruments that are between, what, one and three years? They're all of them up to three years.
You, you issue a van for a year, you renew it for a year. There are special vans that can go much longer than that. DIF bans have allowed us to go ten years before we put in long-term financing. But the regular vans that Treasury issues are one, you can renew it for another year, then you go long-term.
Because you have the option, you know, you said school buildings.
Because you have that option, right.
You can bond them longer. I mean, does this basically get broken down and goes in, it doesn't go out into the market and call it twenty million dollars on some?
No.
It's broken down based on your ability to bond on that particular item?
The, the financing behind this, the debt schedule is broken down to those assets and then the debt schedule will reflect the very amounts as you progress down the life of the bonds.
So do you ever take, like, into consideration when you're putting together a modeling, some of these are shorter-term bonds?
Police cars. You wouldn't go over five years on a police car.
Would you say that with anticipated new revenues coming into the city, we're going to go on a shorter bond and just service that and get it off the books? So you obviously, you've always launched at the maximum term allowed per, I'm guessing, statute?
Yeah, it's, it's a judgment, Chairman. You look at the assets involved and try to structure it so you're not making payments when the asset's no longer useful life. So there are guidelines. They give you a guideline in municipal finance code software. You can, you can ban, you can bond software. They suggest ten years, but if the nature of that particular software is that there are changes every five years, you might shorten it up. You know, that's, that's just one example.
Any other questions, Mr. Cavan? Okay, Counselor Debona?
So the, the number seems to be creeping up. Perhaps it's just my mis-listening, but I thought when you, originally in your discussion with me, you said the debt to budget ratio cap should be at about six percent. And then just it's worked its way around, by the time it got to Counselor Debona, it was six to seven and a half percent. What is the number? What is the, what is the number that the, that the ratings agencies would like to see, the debt to budget ratio?
Six to seven and a half percent, it's a range.
Okay, so they don't want to see you go into that range, they want to see you below that range?
They want to see you at or below the range of six to seven and a half percent.
Okay.
If you went above your own policy, they'd want to know why. And if you had a particularly large project that you were funding, that would be a reason.
But I'm not asking about our policy, I'm asking about their judgment, because that's what affects, that's what affects our credit rating. All right, so in what you gave tonight, or in what we have with this fiscal year two thousand seventeen, the debt to budget service with the CIP is five point nine seven percent. So it's three tenths of one percent off of that six percent mark, right?
Below the cap.
Right, below the cap. That's including, that's assuming the full amount as requested, this eighteen million?
Uh, correct.
Okay. Does it take into account the thirty or seven million for the downtown?
Well, the DIF, the DIF is on the schedule, yes.
So the debt to budget service with CIP, this third to last column, the five point nine percent fiscal year two thousand seventeen, that includes the DIF?
No, it, 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 it doesn't include the last million dollars. That came out after the schedules were together.
Right, but we're looking at, we're looking at thirty-five million over two years, right?
Over two years?
Over the next two years?
For what?
For downtown-related borrowing?
You know, I'm less familiar with the, with what's on the different agenda.
Okay, well, so what, so I guess what I'm trying to figure out is what, when you're giving us this number of five point nine percent, I'm trying to figure out what's included in that. So the last million of DIF borrowing isn't?
I don't believe the last million is in because it's a recent development and the schedule, we were putting that schedule together a month ago. So I don't, I don't know how, what the last update was to that particular one in front of you. I don't believe the one million in the DIF ban is in that. And the reason it doesn't affect the current year, as I'm thinking as I'm going along, is if we do that ban in July, there would be no payment due in seventeen. The first payment wouldn't be due until eighteen and our capacity is much greater.
Yeah, regardless of...
Regardless of when the bill is due, that still affects our debt to budget service, right? No, one would think a debt service to budget ratio, because the debt service is the actual payment of the interest. We wouldn't pay anything till eighteen.
Okay, because I'm, I'm reading this from First Southwest, right?
The debt book, yeah.
Familiar with this?
Yes.
You gave this to us, right?
Yes.
All right, there's a section eight that is the summary of Quincy, Massachusetts general obligation, non-school state programs noted, standard and course ratings direct, right? You read that?
I read it at one point in time, not recently.
All right, well, in here, it says that overall, the city has a total direct debt outstanding of two hundred and forty-three million. Plans include the construction of, middle-term, middle-term debt plans include the construction of a downtown parking garage, sidewalk repair, and a sizable middle school project, which we expect will amount to as much as thirty-five million dollars in new debt over the next two years. They're not, in this report dated July... They're not, in this report dated July 2015, they're not including the additional 20 million, right? Because those parking garage, sidewalk repair, middle school project are not in this capital plan. So it's going on top of 18 million plus what they're projecting to be 35 million, right?
That's correct. They didn't know anything about the CIP plan. I don't know that we had a good idea on the CIP plan.
But so now we do, so...
An additional debt has come off.
Right, but so you're telling me in fiscal year 2017, the debt to budget service with CIP is 5.97%. And my question back to you is, does it include the $35 million in debt over the next two years that's referenced in the standard impours report for downtown parking garage, sidewalk repair, and a sizable middle school project?
Yes, it does.
It does? Okay, and that's broken out specifically?
It seems to be broken out in the schedule you're referencing. If they have, if they have...
They don't have a schedule, it's a, it's a...
Give a debt book, I mean.
Okay, can you tell me which page I can find the parking garage?
I haven't gone through the debt book very recently.
Because every time I ask a question on a downtown presentation, I've asked how much is the parking garage going to cost? And it's, we don't have a final answer for you, Councilor. You know, that's still up in the air until we, until we get there, we won't have it. But standard impours is assessing a cost for that parking garage. And if there's a number in it where they say they believe the parking garage for downtown is going to cost, I would love to know that number.
I think what they were doing at that point in time was just projecting.
Right, but if they're able to make a projection, the administration hasn't been able to make a projection.
I can't speak to the cost on the parking garage specifically, Councilor. Some other people are much more involved in that day to day.
Well, when I asked, hold on a second. So when I asked Redgate, when they did their presentation, they also couldn't make an assessment at that point as the cost of the parking garage itself.
I don't, I don't know.
Okay. So, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
The, maybe Mr. Walker has...
I'm going to, I'm going to deal with one person at a time. I'll go back to Mr. Walker if he has something afterwards, but... So this report also, the standard impours report also suggests, or states, "We believe fixed costs associated with Quincy's long term liabilities will likely continue to strain budgetary performance over the next few years." And then in the outlook, it says, "The negative outlook," because in the first paragraph, they suggested we have a negative outlook moving forward. "The negative outlook reflects standard impours opinion of Quincy's declining reserve levels in two years of operating deficits." We, the third, third sentence, "We could lower the rating if Quincy fails to raise taxes to restore fund balance levels and experiences another year of budgetary imbalance." So when I was asking you what the, what the ranges are, so, because I think it's important for us to know what we're doing and what we're borrowing before we do it. So before we get a report like this next year that says we're downgrading Quincy's rating, bond rating, because X, Y, Z, it's nice to know that heading into it because I think that would inform our decision. So that's why I was asking for more information in terms of the benchmark ratios. And the fact, I mean, I'm just, I continue to be flummoxed that none of that information is, is in the First West letter, you know, from Cinder's letter about this. I mean, it seems to me that this would be the place where it would contain comments like, "Well, the rating agencies could lower the rating if Quincy fails to raise taxes to restore fund balance levels and experiences another year of budgetary imbalance." I mean, so I, for me personally, I'm looking for a little bit more from our consultant. I'm looking for her to consult a little bit more with us about what the impacts of our borrowing is going to be. Not, not just the CIP, but also the downtown.
I don't want to speak on behalf of Cinder.
That's fine, I'm not asking...
But I think she would point you to the rating agency report that you're citing. The negative outlook refers largely to the long term debt problem that the previous counselor was talking about, OPEB and pension liability. That's a problem to be solved over decades. Quincy's far from alone in that. That's one long term problem. The short term problem of a decrease in reserves was specifically due to the snow and ice issue from the winter of '15. The city paid out $13.8 million for snow removal. That seriously impacted our free cash ability to increase stabilization. We couldn't increase it that year. We couldn't increase OPEB that year. In fact, we didn't put before you the formal policies that we refer to tonight. So that was a little hiccup as far as our progress. It lowered our reserves to 10.6 million. We had been at 16.8. They want to see those get back up. Right now, stabilization slash free cash is at 13 million. Our stated goal is 14 to 16 million. They openly would like to see us at 20 million. We're on the road back to that.
The, but it's talking about two years, not just one. Get the winter, and they know that severe weather conditions in 2015. But they also know the deficit in two, because it's two years of deficit. The deficit in 2014 resulted from the use of reserves for minor capital in maintenance projects. And then it suggests in fiscal year 2014, the deficit results across all government funds was negative 3.24. But so the 2014 was because we spent money on, in their opinion, minor capital and maintenance projects.
Yeah, there was the initiative on the sidewalk repair program that I'm particularly familiar with, as well as the mayor making an appropriation directed to the tax rate to keep tax rates down. We had had the first year of a serious residential burn shift. So to keep the ratepayers, you know, somewhat helped, 3 million went to the tax rate as opposed to in reserves. That would have changed that report.
So I supported both those initiatives, still do, support the principle of, you know, more sidewalks. Commissioner's done a great job with that.
I actually wanted the mayor to keep the money in reserve, and he overruled me. Wanted the sidewalks too.
But so I guess what I'm driving at here is in 2014, before I voted for that transfer of funds for the sidewalks, no one told me that, that would be frowned upon by the credit rating, rating agencies. And perhaps I should have asked, and I didn't. So I'm asking now what the CIP is going to do in terms of how that's going to be viewed upon by the rating agencies, like standard impours.
The rating agencies understand that you have to make investments in your capital assets. That's a very positive thing to do. And when it's planned out over a period of time, and we discuss it with them ahead of time in ranges, they've built that number into their current credit rating for us. Our credit rating has just been upheld, AA plus. 10 ratings, we're in the ninth. You know, one from the top, we're not AAA, I don't think we ever will be. But we get a very high rating. We just got 1% interest on our GANs. The negative outlook is due to long term financing issues that Quincy is not alone on, that we have to make progress on, and we've begun to. But they believe that the CIP is affordable. They expect it frankly to be incorporated. They know we're putting it before you this session. Whether we do or not, they'll withhold, you know, that's up to you to approve it or not, whether we need a ladder truck or so forth.
So that two minutes that you just did is exactly what I was looking for from Cinder. Exactly what you just said.
I can't speak for Cinder. I don't know that you can say that.
What, why, I'm appreciative that you said it because it's very responsive to the, you know, to the heart of the issue here. I want to support, you know, $5 million for, for streets. I want to support that. I think it's one of the biggest problems we have in the city, traffic, streets, our infrastructure. So I want to support that. I'm, I'm, I'm at, pretty much at yes already. Don't write that down, Mr. Walker, but I'm pretty much at yes. It just, you know, it's about doing the due diligence and making sure, you know, you ask the questions that need to be asked before we take the vote. So having that information from Cinder would be helpful, like what you just, and maybe she doesn't, maybe she disagrees with you, but I'd like to hear her take on kind of the way in which you just said that. As it relates to, just wrapping up with this, as it relates to OPEB, you've said our OPEB liabilities. You've said a couple of times now that we're far from alone, and I get that. I understand, you know, the boogeyman that OPEB is and how it affects every community in the state. I understand how we got there and what the dealers with it. And certainly, we are not going to, this council, this mayor, going to figure it out in fiscal year 18, 19. So it's not that kind of a problem. But saying we're far from alone to kind of wave it off is not at all which, what you did or doing, and I'm not saying it's wrong, but it's not reflected. That same kind of attitude towards it's a long term problem, but everyone's in the same boat. So it's really not that, that big of an issue for us in the short term. The credit rating agency standard impours doesn't seem to think that. I mean, they seem, they seem to be weighing that heavily. So it's hard to kind of reconcile the, we're far from alone, so don't really worry about it. And I'm, I'm not trying to be cavalier in paraphrasing, but essentially, yeah, everyone else is in the same boat, so it'll get figured out eventually. But they seem to suggest that it's a fixed cost associated with our long term liability that will likely continue to strain budgetary performance over the next few years. They're not saying, you know, 20 years out, 10 years out, they're saying a few years. Few is, you know, under five, in my opinion, it's two, three, four, you know?
No, it's going to go on for a long time as far as solving the problem.
But it says it's going to, it's going to jam up our budget over the next, our budgetary performance, strain our budgetary performance over the next few years. So it doesn't seem to me that they think the same way that we're thinking about OPEB.
No, I disagree with you. I take it equally seriously. I think they do too. But when I say we're not alone, I really mean every city and town in Massachusetts, as well as the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Now, the Commonwealth has the ability to enact something like a penny on the sales tax just for their OPEB problem. We don't have that kind of flexibility. But there may be, there's been talk about some mandatory, things put on cities and towns where they have to do something in the future. It's speculative right now. But it's recognition of the overall problem, it's clouds that everybody has to address. But it won't be, as you said, it won't be two, three, four, five years. It's a 30 year issue. And you start by putting money aside. We started a trust fund. They gave us credit for that. They wrote us up well, and we only put 1.2 million. When the snow hit, we froze. We didn't put more in stabilization on OPEB because we needed it for, we needed it for snow. They recognized that. And now they're specific with saying, we want you to address it again and turn your attention to putting more money towards that. We told them our plan with the fiscal policies, and they're very supportive of that, getting back in the right direction.
Sounds like we kind of had to do that because they, they said in the opening paragraph for the rationale for our ratings, "The negative outlook reflects a decline in available reserves through consecutive years of operating deficits, as well as an absence of policies and planning that we believe are critical to ensure stable reserve levels and budgetary balance." I didn't read that part because I figured that's what you had addressed with the policies.
Right, I think that's a pretty common statement for most cities and towns right now. The cities and towns are looking to the state for some guidance on what to do in the future. Not that there's safety in numbers, but since everybody's facing it, I talked to county treasurers and other, other city CFO people, and some of them have done nothing. Some of them are surprised that we already have a trust fund. More and more people are doing it every year. I just read last night that I think it was Revere or Saugus put $100,000 away. And they were very happy, it's the first cent they'd put away. So, you know, we have a leg up on some people, but everybody's getting ripped up for it. And the problem's not going away with that case.
All right, thank you, Mark, appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Glad to, Councilor. Good for the discussion, thank you. Thanks again, Mark. It was pretty clear, just communication, you know, helping us bridge the gaps on my consultants' play earlier for the session. I appreciate the willingness to do so. But that, turn over to Mr. Walker, who's going to address I demand the agenda, and Andrew Rhodes.
Who are you, Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Public Works, Ramon Lisiere, as well as City Engineer Sean Hardy. But just from a brief policy perspective, I want to give the council an indication where the mayor's coming from overall. $5 million, $5 million appropriation tonight represents, as discussed a little bit earlier, a first phase with the mayor, what with your support, hopes will be the multi-year program really tackling our road infrastructure in an unprecedented way. While the previous capital plan for those who are around sort of focused on getting up to speed and doing a lot more with our public buildings that we had in a long time, and doing more with flood relief and drainage that we've had in a long time. It's the mayor's expectation that this plan and the plans in the coming months and years will focus on heavier on road improvements. The breakdown for this request as it stands right now could be $3 million for neighborhood streets. The mayor will be working hopefully directly with the ward councils to determine priorities. And about $2 million allocated for some main federal affairs. Ward councils, we believe, are through the boots on the ground when it comes to identifying the streets in the reconstruction. And our engineering team will be working closely with the council and our, and other stakeholders as we move forward. And again, we view this as sort of the first round that will be built upon in the coming years through what the mayor expects to be, as the chairman has brought up on several occasions, potential working some of this road money into operating budgets and some other revenue sources as opposed to bonding out these, these projects over a long time. So with that, I guess we'll go over the questions. Obviously, the commissioner's here, answer to Sean Hardy.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. And, you know, as someone who's been up there for not that long, but certainly advocated with everybody else, that's where the rubber meets the road, no pun intended. That's the best, in my opinion, one of the best examples to give to somebody in terms of your taxpayer dollars out of work and see a real construction crew on the street. Speaking for Ward too, there is a certain, a tremendous need down there. And I think it's, I think it's, I'm very happy to see it, and I'm grateful that the roads are getting a little better, because the reliance on a funding source outside of the city should stop. We have, I think, Commissioner Armando probably directed from home, I think it's 320 miles of sidewalk and 270 miles of road, and there's a lot of infrastructure to maintain. And, you know, it's nice to see, taking first step in addressing the need. But, you know, we look across the city, that there's a lot of work to be done. Councilor Fenn.
Can I, this is something that I could be extremely supportive of until, with all due respect to my colleagues, when I'm at the primary judgment, it's going to be the ward council of boots on the ground. I'm just curious, is there a more objective manner for making decisions in terms of what the best investments are going to be in relation to making certain, war streets don't fall into disrepair? Which brings me back to something that I thought was the real achievement of the part of the city of Quincy was when, again, initiating a pavement management plan. And I guess the question would be is the status of that technology, have we kept up? Have the streets been ready? Have a sense of what, what that investment would mean in terms of keeping other streets from falling into disrepair that required greater amounts of capital to fix?
Mr. Chairman, we don't think the council can, well, thank you for the invitation. I certainly question the director of maintenance, Councilor.
Well, certainly, Commissioner, but again, you remember the discussion in terms of how it emerged. In fact, we're a drag of past history, but at that point, you would suggest that a much higher investment than the mayor at that time, or the council was going to perceive it. But the premise is a simple one, is that if you exhaust the resources on all of those streets and massive disrepair, it's a zero sum game because those other streets in terms of maintenance and need tend to fall into disrepair. And at that time, we were, we was France and Anado, who put in the technology that was able to go out and gauge on a regular basis and grade on an annual basis where streets are at. And it provided a sense of being able to schedule over time so that the dollars invested have the greatest amount of return. And I guess all I'm asking is, that system's still in place, and will it be used when we gauge where those resources are going to be invested?
For you, Mr. Chairman, to Councilor Fenn, I was saying, the, the technology is still there. It's not, Department of Public Works technology. There's a consulting firm that we used back in 2003, 2004, that generated the initial pavement management plan. And then there was a, some improvements or updates, the last one being 2013. For those of you who maybe, if it's the first time you've heard that term, basically what pavement management plan does, it identifies those roads within a particular municipality that with more maintenance, you could spend the life of that road. So for example, a roadway that may be... So for example, a roadway that may be in decline after five to six years of pavement replacement on it, if you did some crack sanding or some other maintenance like that, it'll probably extend the lifetime of that road for maybe five, six, or seven years. So it's not a question of the best use of your funds or the best way to expend your construction dollars. And the way that I look at it is that pavement management is just that. It looks at the condition of the pavement on top of your roads. And the problem that I had teletopically, and I do support the program as part of a comprehensive holistic look at roadway construction, which you look at the infrastructure, water, sewer, national grid work. You look at resetting curb, sidewalk repair. So back in two thousand three, four, uh, there was an estimate that to quote, "Maintain the roads in the city," uh, you would need, need fifty million dollars to do that. But that was simply just a put either crack sanding or a half inch of macadam on roads that needed to be fully reconstructed. So with your knowledge, input, support, the mayor's philosophy and one that I support is that we don't just surface a road to satisfy the folks who happen to have lived there for a couple of years, knowing that those imperfections, that deterioration is going to surface again. A half inch of macadam does not repair a badly damaged road. And to give you an example, the report that I looked at, and I just took Rice Road. So this report indicates that under the pavement management plan, we could save Rice Road, and it'll cost you a hundred thousand dollars to crack sand or do some other work like that. Well, Rice Road, a few years later, cost two point three million dollars. What that report doesn't say is that the water main needed to be repaired. What that report doesn't say is that the sewer line had collapsed, that needed to be repaired. On many roads in the city with report, what pavement management doesn't tell you is that if you keep putting macadam and talking macadam and talking macadam, and you don't reset the curb, you have what? Flood, and basements, and driveways, and sewers. So, um, I understand the technology and it's valuable to know, and it's important data to know. From two thousand three to two thousand thirteen, uh, we probably still remain in that fifty to fifty-two percent, uh, where we are today. It'll be nice to know, but that's a cost of sixty-five thousand dollars to get here. And, um, I guess collectively as a city, this mayor will ultimately decide whether, at this point in time, with the first time in a long time that we're making a significant investment in roads outside of Chapter ninety, so we can actually look at doing some private ways. We can actually look at doing some major roadways, things like Quincy Avenue. That is a serious need of repair, very little areas that curving. And the other point I just want to mention, it's not my area any longer, but I know that Mr. Clark, you see a type of traffic, uh, control, uh, signalization of intersections. Just be mindful of the fact that there is a definite connectivity between road reconstruction and traffic control signals. And, and I just cite Quincy Avenue as an example. Brad's constituents have been counting him probably since Peter Batters, that the intersection of Faxon Park Road and Quincy Avenue is one of the most dangerous roads in the city to get out of. It's impossible. And that's why people go down Faxon Lane, which was, which is a Class A, single-family residential, shouldn't have any traffic on the street. But because of the traffic control signal there, that's the street that people use. They shouldn't. They should use Faxon Park Road. More of a major roadway, able to handle that kind of traffic, wider, more secure, by people afraid to use it because they can't get onto Quincy Avenue, especially to make a living. Very, very dangerous. So we talk about traffic control signalization, and we talk about road construction. That's why some of these numbers may not even look at, be absolutely to the dot of a penny. Because if you do Quincy Avenue, it's more than just roadway curving, sidewalk, it's traffic control signals. And, and some other. So, so the bottom line is, uh, Council, is that yes, it's true. It does have value. Does it get the kind of value that I think this city is looking forward with some of the roads that need major reconstruction? Is that program really does not address? If you had the holistic approach that the mayor's representative, Mr. Walker, was talking about, if we ever get to the point that we have Chapter ninety money, two to three million dollars, if we ever get to the point where appropriation money of two to three million dollars can match that, and then have a situation where periodically to do some of these major roads. Another example, Adams Street was in the report saying you could fix all the problems on Adams Street by just spending two hundred thousand dollars. Well, the cost is one point five million dollars a couple of years ago to fix Adams Street. So those are the deficiencies in a plan that basically tracks deficiencies in the top pavement of a roadway without considerations of sidewalks, curving, infrastructure, national grid, gas lines, electric lines, water lines, sewer lines, all the things that all of you are concerned about. And you can't indicate what may happen next year if there are multiple sewer, water, national grid. Look what National Grid has done to Southern Island. Look at what they did to Adams Street. There really was a driving force to get those streets resurfaced. So, are we doing something? Yes, we have. We have cracks here the last two, two or three years. We have a, a proactive, reactive program for, um, pavement management in general, where we, we have repaired wall corrals in the last three years than the city probably did the last ten or fifteen years. Last year alone, we've been ten thousand corrals. Any old road is a problem. It shows deterioration in the roadway. And the longer that eruption remains, the problem that could arise more in interruption. So we have crack sanding, we are filling out corrals, we are repairing our roads, maintenance and that, that to guide. You're all aware that a few months ago, we sent National Grid an extensive comprehensive letter, "Do a better job in your trenches. You are disrepairing, uh, your trenches and neglecting them." That was about seven hundred, some odd trenches. That is a value of about five hundred thousand dollars that we don't have to spend to repair those roads. That is part of the council of pavement management. We do a better job in our own trenches. So it's not that we are ignoring that aspect of this program. But what it does mean is that we need to address, uh, I believe, some of those major roadways that are desperately to be repaired and still satisfy those neighborhood streets where there are a lot of pedestrian traffic, foot traffic, uh, walk-to-school traffic, uh, that... And I, I guess as a ward council, I think, I'd rather, I, I guess I'd rather say that the ward council goes more about roads and needs to be done than some agent here somewhere.
That's how in the past history, exactly, so the same streets get done over and over again. While we're living, uh, continuing to be fine.
Yeah, but we don't, yeah, that's because they're, you know, those roads are not addressed.
If you're, if you're putting forward the premise that political considerations work better than solid asset management in terms of moving, uh, keeping infrastructure intact, that suggests just the opposite. And again, that's not to say that the ward council's input to creating a problem isn't important. But one would think that when we're coming up with this number of five million, that some thought has been given as to how we can get the most out of that particular investment. And this, like many of the things that come before us, again, is, you know, again, pretty short on specifics. And so from an asset management perspective, you mentioned National Grid and utilities, and you're absolutely right. It's an intersection between that. So what's the present linkage between that asset management and decisions that we're making in relation, in relation to reinvesting into the infrastructure and roads and streets? Is there a plan that presently, um, is in place in terms of how to get the best impact? And it seems when you've mentioned a couple of places, do we have any idea at this particular point in time what the cost of those fixes might be?
Well, again, it depends upon what, what the vote is, but where I still look at roads, we know we do that. I don't think anybody can question that Quincy Avenue is in a favorable condition. I don't think anybody can question that sections of Willis Street.
No, and again, I'm not necessarily trying, I'm, what I'm asking is what, what...
Burge Highway is a failed street.
What would be the cost to fix it? That, those are some of the questions because we're in this situation, again, where, and, and again, this is not just a reference to Public Works, but in terms of how we approach this specifically, that rather than a planned approach from an asset management type of perspective that looks and is continually quantifying what the real cost, what the real deficit is out there that exists in terms of infrastructure, we come in and say, "Give us the five million, and we're going to come back and we'll tell you what we're going to do." And I think that that's one of the things, um, I know that that's not what we do on an everyday basis. I, I know. And so all I'm asking is, is there some way we can articulate that so that when we legitimize those votes, we're doing it with a certain assurance that this is saving money down the line? That, that's kind of the perspective, um, that I'm coming from. I mean, everybody's been through that frustration, right? You do, you fix something on, and I know not everything is foreseeable, obviously, and things happen, but, but it's, it's a critical part in relation to the whole infrastructure on the utility side as well.
But what this holistic, what this holistic approach does, uh, Council, is that, and that begs true what you just said, but on the flip side of that, to resurface a road, put a half inch of macadam?
Yeah, well, that's a much different perception of what...
Yeah, but that's what pavement management is.
No, you know, I...
And then two years, and then two years, there's a, there's a national grid break, a lot of breaks. So we holistically look at a road, and that, that's why I'm not suggesting that pavement management is not a vehicle by which we can improve roads within our city. I, I just question...
I just don't want to confuse the...
With analogy...
That wasn't the point. The point was where we invest in specific dollars in fixing those roads structurally, I think it's pretty clear that the road is totally gone now. It costs far more to even fix that structurally than it does one of those that is ranked. So that you can extend and actually accomplish more with proper investment, creating fewer streets falling into those condition of those ones that are Fs or failures under the pavement management. And it wasn't simply about simple maintenance to extend like as I remember it. It's a choice about where to make those repair investments.
Yeah, but there was no recognition, Council, with all due respect of the ancient water mains that we have underneath that macadam.
Yeah, I understand.
There's no major, there's no major of those reports. A lot of our streets have water mains that are dated eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, ten, eight, eighteen, so we know mention of the sewer system is old.
That's another, and also, and you and I had some conversations about that.
That's the problem. That's the problem.
Really looking forward to see if I can't get some handle on, on asset management as it relates to those things as well. And I know the work that we've been doing on that. I look forward, uh, once we get past some of these things, but with Public Works, in terms of seeing if we can really get a hand on that as well.
I, I understand. And I, I'd like the city to get here. I, I just don't know now is the working time to do it because the resources are so valuable and there's so much work to be done. So for me, it, it, there are so many roads that we need to focus on. I shouldn't say this, that it really, that it, and I'm not going to say it because it doesn't matter. But there were so many. This five million is just such a limited amount of resource to do all the roads that we need to do. So, um, so I think it's a good mix of residential versus commercial major roads.
Council?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
I recognize Council of Forests.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Due to Commissioner Ramon, Dan, I want to first your office. In the old council office, we had that pavement management plan hanging up right in front of ballot, how these roads were ranked, and they reviewed them based on their infrastructure conditions. Like I said, if they were too far gone, we weren't dealing with you, we're going to take, you know, wherever to maintain what we can. So deferred maintenance in our road and infrastructure has clearly been a problem. One of the best policy management decisions that I feel from administration has made is exactly what we're talking about. Take a good look at what the infrastructure is. Don't pave over a hundred year old main. We did C Street a couple of years ago, narrow section between Willows and LeBret Field with a hundred year old water main. Full reclamation, we ripped it up. National Grid refused less than a hundred year old gas main with no leaks. And here we are, full reclamation, it's a city priority, it's an egress for two thousand households. And so we took advantage of replacing that main. It was a long overdue maintenance. Finally got that taken care of. And we buried National Grid's hundred year old gas main. So it's really, really frustrating when you hear from people, you know, the surface conditions of a road, and that's all you're looking at, and here we are looking at a hundred year old mains. And we've been doing a tremendous amount of effort, due to I and I work in the area, due to water main replacement. I know you and I had conversations, we've had a couple of breaks, and I think it was Thanksgiving morning, it was the second, third break for Stone Street, all the houses next to the water. Here we are, we need to tackle that main. And of course, we need to fix the road, right? So when I look at five million dollars, and of which we're taking two million out for the, for mains, leaving three million, which is about a half million dollars per board, that's not going to do Stone Street. That's, I mean, a completely different level. And I look at some of the, the done-run road races about to come up, and the family always will run the roof beforehand, even though they're always so generous to take care of their problems and make sure the conditions are as best we can for the road race. But every time when I go down, it's, you know, it's going to see the same people with the same conditions of rubber street, but it's such a long road. And we're talking a half million dollars. That doesn't even nearly account for any of the infrastructure work we need to do. So to me, I'm a strong supporter of the strategy that starts with the underground infrastructure. You know, the residents at home aren't necessarily seeing that there's some surface conditions in the conditions of the road, but while we're strategizing as to what would be repaired, may not be the worst, the worst road because it may be the hundred main that we know has issues. So that's something that I have, um, really enjoyed working with department on. You know, I know we've had all the gas mains replaced from Ray Hill. Those residents have been asking to have the road repaired. I couldn't even imagine, you know, five million dollars, five thousand dollars of priority going to be how we can pick that because the needs are great. Every time I drive down, you know, close island roads, it's a need, a secondary road with a lot of assholes. And I don't know, is it easier leaving that then? We're not dealing with speeding. I mean, it's, it's a real mess. A lot of the conditions of the roads, there's a substantial amount of money of the fifty seven, the aging of our infrastructure. I mean, we, we've, I have reviewed the Ward one list about, I think everything's out there. It's a hundred years old. So we're, we're going to start. But, um, this is definitely a council order. I will be supporting. I'm seeing tremendous effort from the department in aligning, uh, different infrastructures with what the needs are. It's very fair. I, uh, got to work with you offline, and I don't know where to even begin because the projects that I see, I don't have any small, small streets that just makes me say, "Who has the major projects on deck?" So I look forward to, uh, working with you on the Ward one section. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just remind, Council, Mr. Chairman, at the time that the, that the issue focused on two thousand three, two thousand four, and keep in mind that the, the funding has to be consistent and it has to be over a period of time. So the funding was for two point three million over a ten-year period, or three million over a ten-year period. The two point three million pretty much kept the PCI, which is pavement index, above percentage. The three million invested per year, I think it bumped up from fifty something percent to maybe sixty-three percent. Our total Chapter ninety allocation is under two million dollars. So this report admitted that in order to keep the PCI the same, you had to spend four hundred thousand dollars per year according to this plan. Any change disrupted the entire program. Well, what does that do to your water main works? What does that do to your flooding streets that curving needs to be reset? What does it do to your sidewalk repairs, your sewer repairs, your national grid repairs? That isn't contained in here. So I'm not suggesting that pavement management is not a vehicle by which to get good data on how to perform maintenance on our roadways. But right now, I think, uh, with, with this funding, I, I think we need to invest more in our infrastructure and our major roads in addition to our residential streets. And then maybe in the future at some point, maybe when the snow money is finally plateaued, whether that money was sent to OPEB or something else, or road construction, is it preferable to have an appropriation for roads? Yes. Yes. Are the taxpayers afford it right now? Probably not. That's why we're going to have to buy a mortgage. But the best case scenario in my mind would be, you marry Chapter ninety, do some appropriation money, do some of the big major streets that, that are in district here perhaps over, over blind issue, knowing that main streets need to be repaired more often because that's where infrastructure, that's where you're born, is, I guess where the big vehicles coming into the city use, places like Quincy Avenue, Independence Avenue, Hancock Street, Southern Island. Those are the streets that on, on the curb line, you see signs of deterioration and problems because these are the biggest, these are the main roads, and they take the biggest hits from truck traffic. So those roads need to be repaired more often, no matter, no matter what you do. So all these things are part of the factors that I think... All these things are part of the factors that I think has, has intelligent people care about the city. Council's working with the mayor and the DPD, I think. In the near term, we can come up with better solutions, because we know that there's a lot of damage out there. We know the concrete is there, we just need to go out and fix it. And then once the appropriation level increases a bit, then I think we can get more into these other programs that may make sense for them.
So Commissioner, just to follow up on that, so two points. One, you know, should be noted, the phenomenal job you had in leveraging resources. So the MWR water main replacement money, and how are you able to do that? And we're already able to get some additional road pavement out of that. And two, that point that you made is about 2.3 is the annual budget that we're putting forward with Chapter 90 funds for our road commissions. You know, and you're, and as from the taxpayer perspective, that's one of the biggest frustrations is the conditions of the road. Jason pays for paying taxes and the conditions of my road, I want my road paved, and that's what they're seeing as a service that would be part of the tax dollars. But what we're talking about with, you know, the, without dealing with utilities, we're talking a quarter of a million dollars per road, right?
No.
Maybe that's a small road. That's saying you're tackling 10, maybe, in terms of, how many miles of pavement do we have in the city that we need to maintain? And we're completely.
If you can literally spend five million dollars on Quincy Avenue.
Just that one part as well.
Without doing an awful lot of unusual things, you could, that's a long road. Niece, obviously sidewalks, no curving, a lot of sections, either traffic control, signal at Bass and Pike Road, maybe some lane taking involved. So you could literally take this whole appropriation and spend it on one road. I'm advocating for that, but that's the difficulty of using that plan, where we know we have a need of a major road coming into the city, one of the gateways to our city, and it is an desperate need of repair. And there's others, Willitt, Bigger Parkway, they can just roll off most of the major roadways into every neighborhood street, you've got tons of them.
And, you know, I think we can all agree that our road infrastructure repairs are way underfunded, right? And any numbers as far as we really are from the state, you know, currently with that 2.3 million range, is that down from Pat? I mean, that's what we've been consistently since I've been on the council.
It's a true note. We anticipate one night to 2 million, and we have, we have a program that is then designed, bid, we went through those basic commands of where. The other thing, just not to indicate when you should take action on this, but knowing that the time from a vote to actual construction is at least two months, if not three. So the work that we're voting to sell the bid, I think the contracts, you know, obviously follow the bidding, we have contracts, a lot of folks have they will look at the documents, weigh in, sign them. So the 2 million dollars in Chapter 90 work will probably be on the road in July. So if you're looking at two or three months from July 1st, obviously you can see that we're looking at some time at the very earliest, or be the very latest of this year, which may be somewhat problematic, but looking at probably more spending into next year.
Well, you know, as fiscal year comes up, for everything, it's a hell of a competitive, the same contractors, so the sooner we get to market to get our contracts prepared, potentially the better off that we're going to be, right? And these things that you're looking to set out in submission to update as a slate of projects that you're finding from one contractor on multiple road projects.
It's a publicly bid, so.
But as a, as a group of projects or equally? Maybe last year you did, you did a few of them.
Yeah, if, if there are, if we feel that one individual contractor won't be able to handle the roads, and some time is of the essence, then we do that. We felt because we've got an early enough stack, that one contractor should be able to complete these roads within the cycle. I must remind you that we lost, you know, the city lost a quality individual contractor. Quality therapist was, was the kind of person you'd want working for you. And he really was the heart and soul of that company. Obviously, bad news, and thoughts of place to go work to his family, but that's a family, that's a family business, much like the burning suns. That's a big challenge for them, so we're hoping that they're able to connect in the theme. But not only were they local quality, they were our lowest bids. So the flexibility we had to extend these taxpayer dollars to get more roadways done, we're hoping that that's not challenged by one of our major companies that did quality work for a real quality price. If that changes, then even the numbers we're talking about could change. So that's just an unfortunate reality.
Same, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner, Council out.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, how are you? It's good to hear you mentioned with private ways, so private ways moving.
Chapter 90 funds, as you know, cannot be used to maintain any public way, which is, we can't use them on sidewalks, we can't use them on roadways. A good part of this, I know that you folks have, on occasion, had calls and sent emails about what could you go with private ways? So this funding would be available if you worked with the mayor, if you felt that private way rise to a level needed to be resurfaced, these funds could be used for.
That's, that's good news for a lot of folks. I'd like to answer those questions, yes. And I'd like to reach out to, to the at-large folks, councilors, council of all, the council of pavement, Hillsdale Gang. When it comes down to boots on the ground, which is encouraging, I would definitely be reaching out to you folks for advice and help. And my point, you've seen me go to those awards, I have two people from worth six, so I start, I go. Be reaching out, because I'm going to support, I definitely support, but I'll be reaching out to you folks, you know, from the foreheads of the board. Thank you very much. Also, Council, Council of Forests.
Thank you. Some votes I take up here, later on, I get to look at and see the wisdom on them. Usually it takes a lot longer than about a week. I'm glad I voted against Council Finn getting raised last week, giving his comments about wood councilors. But I'm happy if any of the at-large councilors want to help me advocate for getting streets paved in Wood 4. Welcome to join that effort. Council, Commissioner. I want to approach this series of back and forth with you and I tonight with the knowledge that I've already indicated publicly I'm inclined to support this, okay?
That's the way to climb, right?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, you never know, Finn might amend it, I don't know. But I'm supportive of this, okay? What is the current annual expenditure roughly that we're spending on, on streets?
Two million on, on roads, another part over years between the private and the public. They were from seventy, well, again, not labor, but maybe $60,000 with private contractor and asphalt. Maybe $300,000 in private contractor and asphalt for sidewalk repairs. Maybe have a 50, 60, try a long cruise doing labor and having cost of asphalt. But the main driver is Chapter Main.
Right.
And that's ranged from 1.9 to 2. I think a few years ago, it elevated up to 3, and we thought maybe that was going to be the new normal, and I write that down to 2 million dollars.
Now, do you have a cost per foot or cost per mile of average over the last several years of the bang for the buck on?
I was talking to Mr. Hady before tonight, and Agent Abel Reno does all of our estimating, and he's been doing it for years. And he's amazing, because as long as I've been here, we have no, we have never overrun a road country. That's pretty incredible, that his numbers are right on the number. Like, he knows, as he goes out and looks at the roads, so he knows the setting, the curbing, or the niece curbing, no curbing, and all of that. So I don't know if he has an actual number for a road, it may be specific to a particular road.
Well, it's interesting, you average it, yeah.
You have an engineer, if the council or mayor says a road and look at a street, you can pretty much be assured that he's going to have a number, at least under, take aside what I just mentioned about that unfortunate.
Right.
Circumstance, that prior to that, he would almost hit it on the nail in general.
Do you think you could look to see if you could come up with a number, if you're comfortable sharing it? I mean, regardless, I'm not going to ask the oldest for that, but just for future record, it'd be nice to know when we're talking dollars, what, maybe over the past five years, three years, I don't know, you pick a, you pick a timeframe that makes sense.
Because you need curbing, no curbing, is it, we're going to go with concrete sidewalks, asphalt sidewalks, or there are the area roads, it's the length of, the width, the length, sidewalks, curbing.
I guess it's different, maybe they could be an average somewhere, and that takes into account. Because I know, I mean, you had mentioned, I didn't write it down, but you had mentioned 1.5 million for avenues. And I think, and I was going to, I was going to throw out, my recollection is, it was about a million when we did Center Street, and we did it in two phases. So, 5 million dollars, I mean, that's a drop in the bucket here.
Looking at Rice Road, 2.39, it's not a very big road. There's not even sidewalk on one side for a lot, but again, we get into water, sewer, national grid work. You like the national grid work, you're probably going into 2.5 or above.
So, what, what, for instance, the town of Braintree is the only thing that Mayor Sullivan had with a hundred, 100 roads program. And they did that in four years, they were averaging 25, and I don't know what parameters they're using specifically, I ask all the time, but I don't know what parameters they're using to, to average 25 road pavings, street pavings per year. But it's likely that they're just doing the crack sealings, you know, overlay. Now, we don't do that, when we've done a road, I think that's a policy decision that the mayor has made, is that we don't do overlays, we.
Well, certainly we don't do them, it's just that it's a priority, we're looking to, in some ways, follow our water sewer drain construction work, so that we don't leave a road, like Rice Road open, because we happen to put a water main in, so it stays like that for 10 years, we want to repair it. So the only money we have is Chapter 90, or some, now we've developed some internal water main.
So do you foresee us doing more overlays, or can we, I mean, again, I know it's a policy decision that the mayor is going to make too with this council in approving the money, but could also win on that. You know, it may not make sense on some roads, but on, on some streets, it may get us, you know, a little bit further down the road.
As I say, whether it's part of this plan, or whether it's part of a future funding and construction mechanism. So I agree with Council Finn that pavement management has a role to play in the maintenance of public ways within the city, indoor or private ways. But there was so much reconstruction work that needs to be done, in my opinion, both in the neighborhoods and in major roadways. But that's where the emphasis, that's where it needs to be for this run. But that does not say that, and we prex it, we prex it, last year we prex it.
Tell me what prex it is, that's one of the questions, what's crack ceiling?
Crack ceiling, if you see it.
The lines, yeah.
Correct, they fill the cracks, the water won't get in there in the winter.
Create larger fissures.
And as to the problem, so a crack ceiling, or cracking the road, is evidence that the road's deteriorating, obviously. So you fix it, and it extends the life of the road, doesn't get water inside, other things inside, to further upset the water. Does the same thing, trench repairs, if there're cracks in the trench, in properly, is that we will resurface in roadways, and then coming back in a couple of years and ripping those roads up again to do infrastructure work. And that just go to taxpayers.
Sure.
And I understand, just wasted money. So what we're trying to do is be more, and we, obviously things happen that I run foresee, but for the, it's, it's not unforeseeable that 1900 water main, and we had 2016, that maybe we need to look at it and replace it. And that if the sewer line is cracked, that the sewer line has been depressed. And we work with our I and I folks to see if the city infiltration are coming out or in, so these are all the factors. But yeah, I'm sure that we would prefer to find roads that we desperately need repaired, that we can do that with just a half inch of road.
Okay, that's good, that's good to know. And then lastly, you had mentioned, I think when you were talking to Council of Forests, funding over the long term. I mean, this, again, 5 million dollars, it's a tremendous amount of money, but our infrastructure is, and roadways are in such disrepair that it's really not going to go that far. What, this isn't a long-term funding, this isn't, I mean, this isn't a 20 million dollar plan that says we're going to do 5 million dollars the first year, then next year 4 million, and we'll be able to do a little bit less thereafter, where we think we'll be able to get our, our arms around the city's infrastructure needs more long-term, if we do that. I'm a little disappointed that it's not, I would support, I'd support it the way it is. I'd support it even more if it was a longer-term plan for capital improvement of our roadways. If there was a more long-term, you know, funding, again, we're going to add more and more, discussions with the mayor, we're going to add more and more every year of city money, not borrowed money, but out of the budget towards, towards.
Do we pay the first city money or borrowed money?
No, I'm just saying it's, clearly there's a vision and some thoughts been given here, the mayor, I've talked to the mayor about it many times. He's clearly thinking about long-term, right, he's, but we don't have before us the plan yet, right? We don't have before us a plan that says, next year, I forget what we did in this particular budget, but next, you know, next budget we'll do a quarter of a million dollars, and then the budget after that, we'll do a half million dollars, same way we've been building up, you know, the snow and ice.
Because we're all mindful of the fact that we live in a city of hard-working men and women who find it difficult to pay their bills and pay water sewer bills and real estate property tax. So these are precious dollars that we're all very mindful of. So I think perhaps what the plan may very well evolve into is that the 250,000 dollars is going to snow and ice. Once we reach that plateau that you mentioned a few meetings ago, then that money that's already into the taxpayer. Tax people are already paying for that every year that's already there. Now do we put it into OPEC, do we put it into retirement, or do we put it into a road reconstruction account? That over a period of time, that would build up to at least match Chapter 90.
And I understand that that's, I don't want to give away something, but I understand that's the mayor's visions to try and get to a point where we match the Chapter 90 dollars, that we can essentially double what we're, what we're currently doing. So I guess more of a comment than a criticism here is that this isn't that long-term funding plan. This isn't, I'm not seeing in front of me a plan that says, this is how we're going to, this is how we're going to solve, or at least tackle the overwhelming infrastructure problem we have with Quincy Streets. This is just, we're going to throw some money at it, we're going to do as much as we can, it's going to help, but it's not a long-term solution. I guess what I'm, it's more of a comment, so thought for future discussion or plan, you, the mayor, the council. You know, let's, I would love to see a long-term, five-year plan just for the roads. You know, what it looks like, where we want to be after five years in terms of money spent.
Well, that's what this is.
It's the first step.
Right.
But I don't see what next year is. You know, this is, and you tell them, I mean, this is next year, essentially, you're telling me it's two to three months from vote to work.
Yeah, I would be surprised if all this money spent in this construction season, I would be surprised. So you're probably looking at next year in any event, unless we, unless you folks vote real fast, and the roads are identified real quick, we're able to design them, go up a bid, get back contracts signed, but you're looking at, at a minimum target.
Right.
And it's just not enough time, concrete is a period of time where you just can't construct concrete sidewalks, it's just too cold in May.
But so what this does, and what your presentation does do is tell me what fiscal year 18 is going to look like, fiscal year 19. And I would love to see that, I know you're capable of it, because I know these things are being, I know the mayor wants to head in that direction. I know you and the, and the engineers you have in your department are very capable of doing this. And perhaps next winter, when there's a low, rather than looking at the national grid trenches, which brilliant, I'm so glad you did that.
Did you say brilliant?
I did, brilliant. I didn't say you were brilliant, I said it was brilliant. So if you want to, if you want to reasonably infer that my comment of brilliance from your.
Dip your head down.
I'll let you have it, I'll let you have it, but, but, so I'd like to see us head in that direction. You know, we're, we're saying what it's going to look like over the next five years.
And keep in mind, when, when the pavement management plan, that my refer to, when that was developed in 2003, the first funding year was 5 million dollars. That was back in 2003 to 2004. So these numbers are not unusual, and they're not unusually high, and it really is a baseline number to accommodate some of the worst of the worst that may be out there, and also to maintain some, some of the David streets in a condition that most people would find to be safer. That's really what it's all about, it's maybe Quincy's roads and sidewalks are safer. about, maybe Quincy's roads and sidewalks are safer, but I imagine, uh, and I can't speak for the mayor, but, uh, in my discussions with him, I think he would like and prefer to have an appropriation component in addition to chapter 90, in addition to the other things that we're doing with national grid, sidewalks and potholes, and, and in addition to maybe, so it's not so crisis-driven, uh, ongoing, but just, yeah, it's no time to do this street, so that's just part of it.
And, and I feel like we've gotten to that point in sidewalks, when you started the sidewalk program, you know, there was, I threw a number at you, I mean, you're doing dozens and dozens of sidewalks in, in west and south Quincy, and then, in the years since we're doing it, you're doing less and less sidewalks, which doesn't mean you're less active for it, it means we've, we've tackled the really bad ones, and now we're, we're in a, a place of systematic repair, if something goes on the list, it's gonna get done the next year, I mean, that's, that's where I would like to be, I think we, everyone would like to be, um, when it comes to roads, it's like, okay, we've identified this road, it's on a, it's on the five-year plan, it's gonna, you know, we're gonna have these turnovers...
And we will, but it's, with sidewalks, I had, I believe I had the resources to do that, or the road to do it, so this question coming up, coming up with the policy and plan, that matched the resources that we had, working the private reverse of the public, uh, resources, because roads are so expensive, and the infrastructure is so expensive, and unforeseen, it, uh, it can be done, if we can manage it, as long as there's flexibility to pivot when something happens that was unforeseen, it's unusual for a sidewalk to, to surprise anyone, they may go from a two to a one, they may go from a three to a two, but, once they, once don't get any better, twos are gonna get worse, and threes are gonna migrate to two and off to the one, so we got a plan for that, um, but, it's, it's hard to know whether a sewer break, whether that's going to be, or water main break, or national grid starts ripping up a series of, uh, holes on a particular street...
An emergency repair, or maybe even an...
Yes, it's hard to foresee that, and therefore you need to have the flexibility to pivot to address that, especially on, on main roads.
Thank you, Commissioner, uh, Mr. Chow, I move approval of Councilor, uh, 2016-1, which you made, five million dollars, uh, for sidewalk and street repair, I know you said you didn't want to take a vote, but I, you know, this information, it's two or three months from vote to work, I don't, I certainly can't justify not taking a vote on it, I made the motion, people don't want to do it, that's fine, but I move approval.
Yeah, just, uh, on the state of, um...
No, that, again, it's, I wanna be certain that the approval really will provide, I would say, no way, really, that's the times, that's how it was like, other than...
So, essentially, you know, we didn't move on this this evening, doesn't really mean anything until the 27th, and we have the council meeting to take it out.
I appreciate that, been six years, I picked up a thing too, but no, I got that.
It'll be trash.
Yeah, I know, I got it.
Counselor Kane.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just a couple of quick questions, so, uh, talking about graded streets and graded sidewalks, how's that, how's that list being named?
The sidewalk list?
Yeah.
We have, uh, a call present, respected as to whether it comes from the mayor, or council, or residents, someone coming in, and, uh, we take every call seriously, it's professionally handled by, uh, someone in, in my office, or if it's an email, it can be done by anyone, they get a letter indicating that we've got the call, and we are going to have the sidewalk professionally inspected by one of our engineers, and we'll get back to it.
So, maybe the process, sorry to interrupt, the process is fine, but that list, where's that list, kind of, of the street, when it's done?
The list is up on our website, uh, usually, and it's kept in, in our office, and we have, we have a list of, um, of all the roads that are currently on the active list to be repaired, and then, in the wintertime, we, you know, our engineers go out, and we, we restructure others, if anyone, if any sidewalks have gotten worse, and we maintain a list of all the threes and all the twos, because even if, a, a, a three-rated sidewalk, which, which is something that, we have a hell of a crap or something, uh, because we rate them according to public safety needs, we'll still have an engineer go back there in the wintertime and look at it, so, these are, we have an active repair list, which is up for everyone, and then the twos and threes are actively invested in, so the old days where someone would call and go on the list, the list was nonexistent, no one looked at the location, and that really was a process that, that really could be a problem, which maybe, as a ward council, maybe if you talked to the commissioner, maybe you'd get five or 10 sidewalks done, and they're riddled with hundreds and circles, and, so it doesn't matter, uh, who you are, how you load, uh, we're doing sidewalks, and if people have the ward council call, that's fine, people wanna call themselves, that's fine, it gets the same professional work, so those must be maintained, with respect to roads, we have identified 200 miles of roads that, that we have, that's just not something that we're, that we do at this point, but what we do do is, any calls that we get, um, mayor, councillors, or folks, wanting to look at the condition of the road and did an estimate, then the engineers will go up, and they will put together a two or three-page document that indicates that they did a road, uh, the issues on the road, the deficiencies, whether it's a need of repair, the condition, and estimates of how much they're costing to repair.
So, that's when estimator Correa comes in, he will not preemptively rate a road, but he will go on after a road is reported to be in poor condition, so, then, once you know, how, you know how many streets of the 200 miles of side of the road in the city, do you maintain that actively, is that, you know, are half of those streets, uh, or roads, are they maintained on the list to say, hey, when we do come across this funding, this is where we tackle it?
We periodically, so, that list, other than the street being new surface, that list stays intact, and that's how we master repair this, and we share that with the mayor on a periodic basis, and that's added to it, but, uh, we rarely ever take the street off of that list unless, uh, unless it's been repaired, but we have, uh, other streets that, um, engineer Womner just has in his email bank, or his, uh, document bank, that would have an analysis of roads across the city, so if you folks, or the mayor, worked together to come up with a particular road, it would take more than a couple of days.
And do you have associated numbers for estimates for that road, so you would have a total currently of not 100% of the 200 miles of roads in the city, but a certain percentage of those, uh, those roads in the city, a number that would be a total that you would require repair today?
Right, and we look at sewer, and we look at water, and we look at terrain lines and curving, so we look at all the things that, and, and there's evolution to it, because, um, sometimes, um, the mayor, they want, or the council would say, uh, look at the road that I, that I prefer concrete sidewalks, look at the road, it's kind of mixed asphalt concrete, people want asphalt, on Fifth Street, uh, we had a situation where Fifth Street was partly curved, partly uncurved, and the council met with these folks, and they liked it the way it was, we had a bond issue, I mean, in the, uh, in the bid, we put in curved, but as a result of the meeting, so, so, we, there's some flexibility built in, the only difference today from last year was that one contract that I think Joe was used to be a pricing.
True.
And they kept winning, the contractor, that they were the lowest record bidder, and some of these are pricing were significant, so the numbers that we were looking at as estimates, you may have to look it up.
That's fine, based on those estimates with the preferred bidder, uh, that you would like, that, that cost, what's the total number even for the streets that you know?
If you know, I, I don't have that here tonight, but I could get that.
Okay, we'd love to know what the total number, infrastructure number, we would need...
Keep in mind, the pavement management number in 2004 was 50 million.
The pavement management?
The pavement number, they looked at it.
Was that 50 million?
50 million, and that was maintenance of roads, 50 million, so that just gives you an idea, that was 13 years ago.
That doesn't, that doesn't seem like a lot, though.
Well, that's crack sealing, overlaying, things like that, that's...
If we're doing a road at 2 million, Rice Road at 2 million...
I know, but say, the pavement management, that, that was just that, preventive maintenance number.
Right, so, total number would be great to have, to understand the universal number we would need to repair and maintain infrastructure existing in the city, that'd be great, um, and then, in terms of fluctuations during that, I mean, there's, the places, you have a guy that knows these roads so well, he estimated, doesn't, doesn't go over, uh, a road contract never has, hope he doesn't have to break that record, um, but, you know, there's probably a model he's built, where you can toggle on, toggle off, or certain parameters or variables within that, uh, that have to do with your asphalt and your labor, whatever else the inputs are, um, obviously, this is something that's very much needed, wouldn't want to hold this up at all, uh, five million dollars, not that much, but would like to see a longer-term plan, and how we can tackle that over time, and that's why we want that big figure, and how we can look at breaking that down over X amount of years.
And again, that, that, those may not be the streets that you folks think need to be repaired, those are the streets that, that come to...
I'm, I'm not giving any streets, but the streets that are reported, that either are reported by us, or reported by people themselves, the residents themselves, but just, I mean, that would be a great figure to have, instead of having to reactively repair and figure out what the costs are, we should be looking at it in a proactive method, um, by, you know, trying to get in front of the number and figure out how we tackle it over time, that's it, thank you, Mr. Kane.
Thank you, Counselor Kane, Counselor Vaughn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Commissioner, um, council's great questions out tonight, um, a lot of them weren't answered, just to piggyback a little bit on Counselor Kamalucci, um, you know...
Am I doing any comment, though?
Uh, well, trying to help them a little bit, a little bit, um, and you know, I, you know, um, just based on that, Commissioner, would you, would you be inclined to actually have, um, each council sit down with you and have maybe the wish list, one public way, one private way, to say, listen, let's give everybody a piece of the pie, let's, let's give them the, the five million to start with, you know?
Most do, most have. But again, I, I wanna make it clear that I'm not the person...
Sure.
I'm an implementer, so, uh, it's a policy that, it's a policy, it's a policy that I, I'll, I'll be happy to entertain anything, and if somebody wants to be looking at a road, we'll certainly do that, but as far as, um, uh, actually identifying the road to be done, that's, that's, you know, my responsibility.
I, I, I agree with Counselor Kane, I think we need to look at a more of a longer-term approach on this, um, just taking, for instance, out Rata, they just, um, voted for a two-and-a-half block override for roads, um, they had, I guess, two votes out there, one was for Turfield, and they said, no go on the Turfield, we did the roads, so you go across the board for municipalities, and roads and sidewalks are number one on the, on the wish list to, to get done, and, and we talk about taxes, and we talk about getting the best bang for your buck, and the value of it, maybe, what ward council, what at-large, what council, this whole group up here, wouldn't want to eat the roads today, I mean, that, that's good money spent, um, I think we need to look at more of a, um, a longer-term approach on this, whether it be, we, we take a million out of our regular budget every year to go into this road, uh, road, I guess you'd call, uh, system, what we're gonna do, um, I also think that, um, I think, right now, I think we're at the time as of the essence, I think the longer we wait, and the winter's gonna be coming, and maybe we, we can try to get a little bit of this in before the winter comes, get some roads repaired, there are obviously gonna be some traffic concerns with those areas...
The chapter 90 roads, those six are going to be done?
Those six are going to be done, yeah.
So, we're gonna get six that, uh, and, and as soon as he gets out of the, uh, when, when the roads start to get identified?
Sure.
We'll put them into...
So, do you have these roads, if we were to approve this in, on Septa, you know, 27th of June, if we were to approve this, do you have a set motion into going to the place, do you put the bid out, do you have these roads, and you kind of have, that you allocated?
I, I can't speak for the mayor, I'm sure he has a mind, and, and not, he suppose what this council would do, I'm sure he has roads that he would like, he'd consider the man wanting the cost, and I'm like, again, you don't know whether you vote for it or not vote for it, right?
Sure.
So, once, once that vote is, we're gonna have a vote tonight, we can go back to the mayor about how we would like to allocate resources and give you votes to vote on. So, but that turnaround time is critically important, because every week that goes live, is when this week is constructed, is when we get this road...
I, I think this, this part of this, um, allocation of the five, you know, capital approval plan tonight is, is imperative, I'm gonna be on board to, to support this on the, tonight, 27th, whatever it may be, I think we, uh, the longer we're, I, you know, the mayor uses the kick the can down the road, I mean, we can't wait any longer, we have to tackle this right away, and, um, this is just the tip of the iceberg, or, you know, water in the bucket, I guess they, they call it, um, we need to press forward here, and this is just to give, you know, a little piece of the pie every board would be great, uh, obviously, like what Counselor Harris said, the, the at-large is involved, that also represents what one, uh, with Counselor Forrest over there, I know she has a lot of roads in council that, that needs to be repaired, there's lots in those streets, so, I'm looking forward to this, part of it, you know, I'm looking forward to more discussions on this, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Vaughn, Commissioner, and Vaughn, what I heard, if we went around the well, seemed like folks, you know, are, are supportive of this, and they just check sequentially with, um, with the auditor, even if they move approval on it this evening, essentially, we can't take a vote on this until, until the document is not...
I understand, I understand, but I think, I think it's helpful for the mayor and us to know that they support this number, and then we can just actually what, uh, what, what that means, so, you know, that's important information, even though it's not definite and legal, I understand.
And is it possible that the roads aren't held tonight?
I'm, I'm pretty confident, if everyone's comfortable. There's a motion on the floor, so, unless Counselor Kamalucci's looking to rescind that, and just knowing that the money's not going to become available till the 27th, regardless, and, so, I'll go back to Counselor Kamalucci with this, um...
I'm inclined to do it either way, I mean, as I said, Jim, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I think, if folks weren't comfortable with it, I'll withdraw the motion, and, uh, even understanding that, you know, um, positive recommendation has no real effect other than perhaps start the planning phases, um, to get this going, if folks want to vote on it, I, I leave it up to the chair, either way, I'm, I'm fine with it, um, second, I'd like to...
All right, there's a motion on the floor, signed by Counselor Vaughn, Matt Park, if you would, call it off.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor Friend.
Yes.
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor Kamalucci.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Chairman Vaughn.
Yes. My name is Murrell, voting, uh, voting in favor, thank you, Commissioner, next item, my name is Jim, my name is John, that is, Mr. Pratiel.
Welcome. Evening, Mr. Chairman, fellow councils, I will speak briefly about vehicles and equipment package, in the order of 5.3 million tonight, open, department heads are also here to help answer any questions you may have, as mentioned earlier, the administration team, together with each department, spent a number of months developing this inventory of necessary equipment upgrades, you will see the detailed cost breakdown for each expenditure in page 34, the 37 of the book that you have tonight, I'll walk through some of the major proposed purchases for each department here, and then turn it over to the individual department head, talk about their requests, and to answer the questions, pal, some of the department heads tonight do have that information, and we will get any other information in the meeting. We'll be starting with the fire department, uh, the request will be for two new engines and an estimated $1,075,000 each, along with a transport van, police department, department will be looking for 12 new cruisers, six unmarked, six marked, a total of 485,000, we've done a good job annually, the last several years, we've used an existing equipment line in the city budget to rotate a number of the new cruisers, going in and out, but we still have a lot of catching up to do, this year, we're using the budget allocation for different vehicles, so we've included these cruisers into the capital plan, this will affect the financing, as a five-year lifespan requires this to be paid off over the five years, if you have any questions, they're not marked in, speak to that, we're also including replacement of the 17-year-old transport van, department of Public Works will be looking at some bigger ticket items, some of those are two new street sweepers, $450,000, two new snow fighters, $450,000 combined, here we stump trucks, backhoes, utility trucks, and these are ones necessary for the day-to-day function of the department, same for the parking lot, largest item is a new log loader at $130,000, and a new bucket truck at $125,000. a new log loader at $130,000 and a new bucket truck at $125,000. Traffic department will be looking for utility truck, electric presser. School department will be looking at two large buses, five mini buses, and a wheelchair mini bus for half a million dollars. Recreation is looking for various boats and utilities. And the council in Asia, Asia, which will be requesting six new handicap accessible vans for costs of $372,000. The vans we have now, six of those vans are very close to outlasting their life. So, at this time, I would just like to bring up, you should probably get, some have backup, like I said, but they can explain what their needs are. Any questions you have? First, I'd like to bring up the fire engine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was the thing. Deputy Chief Phil Jackson is passing on an estimate for one of your engines. Deputy Chief Jackson is chairperson of our committee putting together the, the different items that we're looking for in this engine and looking at the different distributors. We're estimating the final cost of the, of each engine at $575,000. These engines would replace engine one and engine five, which have 2,005 vehicles. Their location is West Quincy and headquarters. The 2,005 vehicles would then be moved to Swan, engine seven, and Houssne, engine six. The engines at these peninsula are 1989 and 1988 engines. Those would then be used as spare engines, and our common spares are 1984 and 1988. We are in dire need of these new apparatus. If the council were to approve this one, were able to get it, it would likely take us at least 10 months to have these vehicles specied out and in service. The transit van that we're looking for replaces a, a van that we took out of service, the frame was rather than nothing. So, that is the immediate request.
Do you have to answer any questions?
Councilor Vaughn?
Are we going to move for, not approve both, I realize, but are we going to improve positive recommendation on every, every department? Is that what, is that what we're saying? You know, why do you give the last?
Sure. So, Mr. Jackson, also it said that you would bring up the respective department head to answer any questions of providing backup and obviously. Yeah, it's, it's one, the question is, it's an overall authorization.
Okay, for the, for the equipment purchase?
Correct.
Till everyone comes up? We don't have to move on fire and then go?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. All right. Now, I just want to know what we're receiving?
Thank you for the question.
Thank you.
Councilor Vaughn, do you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the two engines, would you be replacing those engines? Or you're going to be buying new ones and keeping existing ones?
Councilor, we'll be taking the engines from Headwaters and West Quincy. Those will be moved to the peninsula. Those are about 11 years old. We get more use of them, just remove them to a less active station. And then, once they go stations, they're used for spares. And we do make this, love the city and all about.
So, they won't be turning, they won't be trading anything in? They'll be using the existing ones and then buying two new engines? So, there's no trading on these?
Correct. There's no trading.
There's no trading. Okay. Put new ones on. Transport, transport van as well?
Yes. That, that has gone completely out of service since the frame was rather than it was all over West Quincy. Most of our vehicles stay in the neighborhood 20 years plus. You can see our spare units, our existing vehicles.
Sure. Now, the one ladder truck, that's a future request? You just, you just put that down?
That's correct.
Sure. Do you have an approximation pricing of that? Just, just our future, that's just a find-out, where we're at?
Yes, Councilor, I have a dream for this. A dream for a new pilehouse to, to put a tower ladder. It would be a different type of equipment. It's an extremely large bucket style truck. It would allow us to bring equipment to the upper floors without having to climb that ladder. So, it's a different type of vehicle that we have in the city right now. City describes, the building we're doing, we should have some diverse equipment. And I did get an estimate on that vehicle. That's about $1,200,000. The last ladder truck that we bought was a hitch motor. Yep. A different style truck that was about $900,000.
Sure. You know, this, this goes back to public safety. And anytime we're, we're doing with public safety, I think that these are, these are important things that we need to address and take care of, as well as when we get into the stations. That's a whole other conversation for another day, which I feel is imperative as well. So, thank you so much, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further questions for the chief or any other department heads who are affiliated with the request for equipment? I think we're all set. I'm sorry, Chief.
Chief Fain?
Chief.
Good evening, councilors. As you can see, with the appropriation request, you have requested six unmarked cruisers, six marked cruisers, and for the first time in about 18 years, a prison transport vehicle. The prison transport vehicle's investment of about $75,000. They generally lost. The one we are looking to replace is a 1999. We actually get it used. We brought it used several years ago. So, it's a 1999 vehicle. It's kind of a ceded it to shelf life at this point. The cruisers that we're requesting, six unmarked and six marked cruisers, are to replace the frontline marked cruisers that are aging out. Generally, what happens is that a marked cruiser is good for their Ford Explorers. They look for about, roughly about two years of frontline shelf life. Then when we do a recycling down through the various other units, they're not 24 hours a day, like the CP unit, for example, special operations. And the unmarked cars that we're looking to replace with six new unmarked cars, the ones that we're trying to replace, a number of 2,000, give it 2,000 Torres and 2,003 Torres. So, we're just looking to keep upgrading the fleet, essentially, is what we're looking to do.
And again, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chief, for coming. So, these vehicles obviously won't be traded in as well. They'll be used on another fleet, I guess you could say. Less, less mileage, less usage. Recycle them through, like, for the first two years , the frontline cars. Then we go with spare cars and backup vehicles. Once, once they use their shelf life there, then we move them in. So, we may use them as support vehicle or detective unit. And then, at the end of their shelf life, usually it's five or six years for the most part, for the marked cruisers. Then, we just basically crush them to the most part. They're, they're of no value. And these, these are Fords. The Ford Explorers is what we're looking for for the frontline cars. For the detective vehicles, they'd be Ford Torres.
Okay.
So, 13 vehicles there in total.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Any further questions for Chief Fain or any other department head associated with the question, for him?
Thank you, Chief. Hello, General Counsel.
Any requests for additional information or thoughts here? Just me on this?
Motion to, of positive recommendation.
Motion for positive recommendation. You know, I will see everything on the points of, I can say.
Oh, it's actually for public works and parts. And it's just for the, because the item listed up here has, you know, three large dump trucks, one large dump truck. And, for example, you know, you have three large dump trucks at $300,000, so you're looking at $100,000 range. And then, when you're looking at one large dump truck for parts, it's cheaper. So, I was hoping to get some clarification on if we're getting different models, or one department's getting one size of dump truck versus the other. This also relates to items such as the backhoe, the pickup truck, and I think that was it. Just those three items.
The disparities, Councilor, that you see in some of those, which are, which are pretty small disparities, really just speak to how we want the vehicles specied at the park department versus how we want to specied at B W. You know, we have different demands. We're not necessarily hauling asphalt as much as the B W might be hauling asphalt. We're not necessarily, we're not necessarily requiring that all of our vehicles be equipped with a four-wheel drive that, you know, in a pile pit. So, you do see these slight differences that would really just be caused by those reasons.
Okay. Okay.
A motion to, Councilor?
For Councilor Vaughn, the two snow fighters, is that a, have you a question?
Yes.
Can I ask, is that adding to your fleet of this maintenance unit at this point? Would that be actually adding to any snow removal?
The city of Quincy, Councilor Fain, Mr. Chairman, to, to, Councilor Vaughn, I was at the finance there. Apparently, you own six snow fighters, two 1986 MAC vehicles, three 1994 auto cars, and one new that we purchased a few winter's ago. So, two of these are 30 years old.
Can I ask, again, I, but, I guess one of the, is that what I'm saying? Is there any effort here to try to get more Quincy heavy equipment on the street as opposed to relying on contractors?
Yes.
Or partners? So, is that actually adding to your capability to do?
The, the wood replacement may be not entirely accurate. Even though these vehicles are 30 years old and as unreliable as they are, when they're in service, they're, they're in service, and we could put 1139 drivers in them. With the purchase of these two new ones, we're not, as far as longevity, we're hoping that this appropriation will be a long-standing over the next couple of cycles.
Well, the question is, is it going to be interesting, what?
Yes, yes, yes.
If the cost benefit component between having 1139 personnel operating heavy equipment as opposed to private contract as well, has any such study ever been done to compare what the costs make people?
Well, the one you have, people that are committed to the city, care about the city, have experienced with the city roads, you have a, a conduit with the same driver and the same area.
Well, I want to be on the record. I really believe that capacity of the city of heavy equipment on the road is significant in terms of controlism of this. So, I particularly support building up that.
So, this will bring us to eight. So, it's a division of two plows. We have six. Four, a five are unreliable, but they still work. So, this will bring us to three, the three are reliable, relatively used plows. So, what it means, we can add two additional limited and I rises.
Is it possibly a longer term, in terms of getting some cost benefit, if we focus on what the difference in contract with the more public transportation?
Thank you.
Councilor Fain?
Thank you.
Councilor Kamalucci?
Thank you. Three to, perhaps, the mayor's representative is the best person. All these vehicles need this year?
Three, Mr. Chairman. In our discussions with the departments, with the mayor, there was, I'm sorry, did you?
I'm sorry, should I, should I?
There's two areas represented.
I don't, whoever he wants to, I just didn't want to ask you.
Um, we started, as I think I mentioned in my opening, we started that five-year needs assessment overall. He was a little down on funding to request it, to what we believe in a good place for above two years. So, this is not going to eliminate all of our vehicle needs, but we asked the department heads to constrain it within two years, what we needed. And again, this would sort of play into the roads. I think, Councilor, that, you know, as we've done every year, we have some road money, uh, equipment money in the operating budget. It would be our hope that, if not expanded, that we'll be able to take care of some of these other needs through that as we go forward. But I guess the bottom line is, we feel pretty comfortable. This is a pretty strong two-year assessment for the equipment needs.
Thank you. So, the answer is no, Al. It's not all needed this year. Are there any funding offsets? I'm going to choose you now. And are there any funding offsets from these vehicles? So, like, we're six handicap vehicles for Councilor AJ, I think, for handicap vans? We currently have handicap vans. Will those be sold? Will we get some small fraction of value back from the five million? I mean, is there a market, you know, in, like, Pakistan for used fire engines? Is there any, is there any money coming back?
I think the chief answered the fire engine.
Well, any of them. I mean, I'm just throwing that out as an example.
Well, some, I mean, when you get into, like, vehicles, trucks, cars, things like that, a lot of the stuff gets passed down between the department. It doesn't just get thrown. We use it until it...
Yeah, I'm not saying, if we just leave them on the side of the road, or like, Lowe's parking lot, we don't own them, but...
As far as the handicap vans, I would have to talk to Mr. Cosby. I know some of them are in...
Both are assembling behind you.
I guess, the issue we have with those, it becomes a safety issue.
Sure, right. It's not our safety issue if we sell it to someone. If they want to buy it, I don't know. If they want to buy it.
You're talking like this?
Maybe if they're in the market for an aftermarket fire engine. I don't know. Chief?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I'm trying to make...
We bought, hold on a second, just for the record, the chief told us during the budget hearings, that we bought, at the time, BU's old transportation vehicle. At the time, it was outdated, outclassed, and 15 years old. So, at one point, we were in the market for some used, slightly worn vehicle. So, maybe there's another community that... Chief, what do you think?
Ma'am, essentially, some of our old vehicles are best used by excavation crews. We cut them up, and then we sell the metal from scrap.
Okay. That's, that's an answer.
Councilor, currently, I have 11 drivers and 11 vehicles. So, if a vehicle goes down, I have a driver with nothing to drive because the condition of the vehicles were so poor. So, we, we use some, a couple, maybe three of the six as replacement vehicles if, I mean, as, you know, substitute vehicles. In the past, other departments have, have acquired some of our vehicles, and the fire department has used the training as sizes when they're, you know, beyond practical use.
All right. Thank you. Al touches upon what Councilor Fain was asking about with the, are there any, some of these, you know, I'm, I'm not sure how some of these vehicles are deployed in the field, you know, bucket trucks, things like that, backhoes. But are we offsetting any costs elsewhere in the budget for contractors? Like, if we buy additional snow plows, is that offsetting? So, Councilor, but also with the bucket trucks, I know, I think Mr. Kasani on an annual basis or every couple of years will put out a big bid to trim back trees that kind of, or trim back trees that kind of, the list has gotten a little long, it gets longer. So, are we offsetting some of those future costs with some of these capital purchases?
You mean, private contractors?
Yeah.
I think this is just, if you look at our vehicles, we make, we own roughly around 375 vehicles, well, the city, cars, trucks, bucket trucks, loaders. This is just to keep up.
Okay.
Basically, it's to keep up.
We're not advancing the, the frontline?
No, no, no.
Okay. Could, would it be possible, do we have inventory? I assume we do some. We have inventory of every vehicle.
I believe we have, I have a fixed asset, fixed asset, yeah.
Could we be set, I don't know, I don't need to hold up the vote, but just after, it might be next time, to see if it's...
You may not get all of them. I mean, some of the vehicles that go back to the 90s because of the requirements, I believe, on the U N S. Some of them...
They've already changed out.
Loaded through departments. And, you know, I don't know if we still have it recorded anywhere, but we still have them. We can get you to update the list, Mike. But we can get you to update the list, Mike.
Okay. Thank you. Bye, Chris.
Councilor, could, uh, through, Mr. Chairman, to the councils, uh, the only caveat that I would venture to Al's presentation, in light of what Counselor Fenn was talking about, was the issue of street sweepers. Uh, to the credit of this mayor and this evening, Council, we have made an effort, a hurtfully an effort, to maintain a public workforce to sweep up the streets. It was a time when private contractors were more than being considered, they were brought into the city. And with the purchase of these two sweepers, and we still need more, but not only now we become any more efficient, effective. When I first got here, it used to take us all spring to sweep, and it would take us most of the fall to sweep. The reason why we couldn't get any work done is because we were sweeping, and then July and August, people are on vacation. So right now, so the goal is that we have one sweeper serviceable in every way, in every precinct. Sweep a water a week in April, like the rest of April may June to do construction. And in the fall, we're going to get it two weeks because of leaves and, and do that. But to do that, you need trucks to put the debris and material in, so you need smoke dump trucks, big dump trucks. You need sweepers that are reliable, because if you go to crew at nine, ready to go on Tuesday morning, and the sweeper's not functional, you've got a problem. So, uh, so in fairness to your question and Al's response, this is a, a continuing quantification of, uh, the public workforce being superior to a private contractor, that are less expensive than a job quickly. Uh, and this doesn't complete the evolution, but it allows us to now have two additional reliable sweepers to add to it. So it's, so it's more than just what we have is what we're doing. Uh, this, this is a continuation and enhancement of the very, uh, report.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. And, and thank you, uh, Chairman. In light of what Mr. Walker said, I'm inclined to not support the motion as proposed. If this is a two-year plan, I don't know what's needed this year, and, uh, and what's needed next year, next year. Uh, but, you know, by logic, support the effort to upgrade the fleet, but, um, just explaining why the vote, when the vote comes up. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Devona. If I could, is anybody here from the school department? Mr. Lane, good to see you. Uh, high school graduation tonight. No, Mr. Drake, you don't tonight?
Yeah? Uh, no, nobody, uh, still in security.
We're all headed a little early. Um, anyways, with, with allocation of $500,000 for the overall, for large school buses, large and small, uh, passenger van and handicapped, it's just a passenger van. Do you have, um, do you know how much these large buses cost?
Uh, yes, we have, uh, quotes, uh, for the, uh, large buses. Someone's bought a purchase last year, uh, three years ago, when one of the school committed $81,000 apiece. Um, and the relevant justification for that is for our large bus fleet, we've got four buses that are over sixteen years old, uh, and eight buses are over ten years old. And, uh, right now, it appears, they're often not far, it is just in the age. Uh, the mini buses, we're looking at $5,000 to $7,000 apiece, which are total of $285,000. And again, same type of breakdown, we've got ten mini buses that are fourteen years old, and an additional five mini buses that are between nine and twelve years old. So we haven't had a major purchase, uh, in vehicles for quite a while. And the wheelchair vehicle, the one this will be replacing, is not yet, it's not yet old. So, um, it is something we desperately need, uh, just to maintain the fleet, particularly the mini buses, and it's that's the backbone of transporting, especially the patients.
Over those courses of the years, um, some of these being sixteen years old, is there any new guidelines or standards in buses that you need for the children nowadays?
Uh, with the many, all the mini buses now, we've, we've integrated seating, uh, for the smaller children with seatbelts, and the, uh, the larger buses have all been grandfathered in. Um, they would not, you would not be able to buy one and put it on the road if you did not own it currently. Um, and there's very little resale value in these vehicles. Most of the time, you wind up donating to the fire department to her, and then customers themselves to scrap. They share that with us.
But yes, like I said, when I was over the school department, the, uh, school committee, um, health, transportation, safety chair, we, we went over this. It just looks like there hasn't been any new stuff that's happened over the last year or two. Has there any been new purchases at all?
The last purchase we got is three years ago. Um, you know, it was very, basically, we had a hundred thousand dollars in our budget for a year, so we stretched that out for three hundred thousand dollars.
So this allocation is something, um, that is definitely needed, and it's something that we need now?
Correct.
Okay. Because I know some, some of these other areas of this budget can be pushed out to another year, another two years, another three years, but this is something in this part of the budget that we need to address because it's public safety. I always go back to public safety. We have to invest and put our value in that. So, you know, um, this is a very important aspect of this budget too, as well, this is half a million dollars for, for the schools. So, um, with that said, um, thank you so much. Thank you so much, Mr. Devona. Councilor Devona, um, Councilor King? No? Okay. There's a, uh, motion to move positive recommendation. Can anybody follow that?
Councilor King?
No.
Council Devon?
Yes.
Council Fenn?
Yes.
Council Hughes?
Yes.
Council Harris?
Yes.
Council Farren?
Yes.
Council King?
Yes.
Council Calmwood?
No. Yes. Passes, our recommendation goes forward, seven two. Um, next item on the agenda this evening is all kinds of, well, Mr. King.
Great information, Mr. Chairman. Um, here to speak on the gap, the capital, uh, items for the public buildings department. Um, and I'd say, you know, it's a discussion in the previous meetings about wants versus needs, and there was a committee that had several times in this particular department, and would let down, we truly feel that these are all the needs, you know, wish list of wants on this list that you have before you. First on the list is, we have still the middle school, some of the, the diligence will allow for that construction, uh, process to move forward. And advance to test forms, such as the ground and as in that mediation studies, um, there's a hundred thousand dollar figure in this plan that is anticipated will be credited or reimbursed in the future from the, the school building authority. Uh, but the funds we need are trying to get the work done, uh, because it'd be, you know, the, the adjustment stuff, we've got to fund back. The night of the, for the heating plants, the boilers, the avenue of how we to annul the Marimont and Walison School, uh, projected total combined of those four buildings is $60,000. This is something that as well would be eventually credited back or, or refunded from the school building authority. It is to allow for the owners, project manager, and, uh, standard design and engineering to advance those, uh, to upgrades of those heating plants, those limits. North Quincy High School, they're along their list for those. First, that was, when I said that those items in the book here, the CIP original book, um, that don't have the dollars, because, like, next to them, they're not being considered to act as tranche of funding. Um, the, the bleachers and the gym improvements in North Quincy are in the document, just originally haven't been funded through the CIP, but with the repurposing of previously approved bonding from the doors and windows project, uh, to the tune of, for this item, five hundred, seven, it's like a thousand dollars. So previously issued and authorized bonding with a repurpose vote, covers this work for teachers and the gym. The science department is in need of a new science lab. Uh, it is a high school of first classes, we're preparing our students to go further into the world, and the science labs got it currently there, will go before the initial was done, uh, when I was a freshman there, nineteen seventy-eight, so nine, eighteen. So they're not really up to today's standards, and they're not serving the population well. Yeah, three years of freshman, okay. We did double sessions.
Explains so much.
The end of sessions.
That's eight years of my life. Um, so, again, we're planning for the future needs of students and upgrading the facility so as to allow them to learn to today's standards. Um, with regard to the, the atmosphere of the building, there's two rooftop chillers that provide for the air conditioner, they, they air, uh, tempering. One of them has quickly failed and is offline. There is one online, but it's being overworked, having to do the work of the two. Uh, and it is something that does need to be replaced, because again, the one is being overtaxed and it should fail, and there's no ability to, uh, to cool the building, and there's a number of classrooms and other spaces, internals of the building that have no outside air, no outside windows. So that is an important one to requalify with, with any air, etc., in that building. Um, it's also not reaching the temperature set for occupancy because of the older version of the one unit. There is a, still an underground storage tank under the front lawn, close to Deangelo's on Hinkoff Street, uh, that is not used, it's not been used since the building was converted to gas. The tank is still underground, there is still fuel in it, and it is truly, it's an accident waiting to happen, uh, which is very likely to be released. So there's a hundred thousand dollars provided for, uh, emptying and closing out that, that just to the site. The exterior of the building is in diameter of masonry upgrades and pointing waterproofing. Uh, the figure that's in, in the funding request now is not nearly enough to do what we, you know, window project and called building anyway, but was the North, uh, Junior High School, the middle building, and the two wings. So if you look from the intersection of West Quan Street, the entire brick builder that you see. Uh, but a particularly concern now is the sound along East Quan Street. There's a number of the, uh, second to fourth floor columns of bricks between the veins of windows, which are fractured two and three stories high, uh, and there's a danger of those bricks falling to the ground. Um, and it is a number of those. It's along East Quan Street, in the trend of corner, into its old cafeteria, by the church that was turned to a condominium. So that's certain public safety out there. Uh, in the Lincoln Canyon Park School, there's a request for a hundred thousand dollars, investment engineering and plenty of work, um, and is providing seed and matching money to, uh, to some other brain programs. Uh, and it's designed to go to a germal, thermal, excuse me, ge, thermal geo-upgrade to the cooling of that building. Uh, and I believe there's, there's people that have been writing comments for that program. This is matching funds, and, uh, it will, make the building more green, it will provide better climate control in the building, and allow the better ability to exhaust the, or expel the air that's in there, this contains the chemicals of chlorine and such. Parkers School, there's a safety issue, there's a fifty thousand dollar request here to reconstruct and reconstruct the front stairs to the building, granite stairs, through the freeze thaw cycle over many years. The stones have been displaced, and it's a tripping hazard for that building. Quincy High School, it's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar request, uh, and it's to recommission and repair the HVAC system and control systems. With the passage of time, the programming fails, uh, temperatures of buildings changes, different uses of the rooms, and then, and the software is off, it's collision. So this is to have the professionals come in, recommission those controls, and, and to, uh, upgrade the software, repair the system up to its appropriate, uh, functioning capacity. Long Class School, there's a request for twenty-five thousand dollars to repair the bathroom and the nurses' office. Um, it's believed that the toilet and the nurse's office is a bridge built to the building where it was built, um, five years ago. Uh, it's one of those boxes up the wall that you pull the chain, if they see cottages, whatever. So it's still in function of the school, but, uh, although it may be pretty cool to an antique collector, it's not appropriate for the building. It is leaking, it's causing damage to the building, the floor beneath, you know, it's difficult to access those pipes, and scrap itself. The interior finishes are original from the construction of the building. Walison School, there's a hundred thousand dollar request here to replace a soil pipe, which is underneath the floor of the building, gymnasium, I believe. It's causing the undermining of the floor, the collapse of the floor. So that's the next iteration, the cover slap, repair the pipe, then restore and repair the floor. Um, and in addition, these bathrooms adjacent to the gymnasium are, uh, a problem health-wise as far as leaks, and, uh, in the age of the, of the fixtures of the bathroom. So there's a request in here for, uh, cleaning the drains, unplug them, replacing the failed fixtures, uh, and just a general upgrade to, to bathrooms themselves. In the Clifford Marshall School, there's a twenty-five thousand dollar request to re-insulate the chilled water pipes. This is part of the HVAC system that provides the chilling air that, that humidifies the buildings. The, if you have a cup of white coffee, you know, condensation on the outside, it's the same with the pipes, so they're insulated to prevent that condensation. Of those areas where that insulation has failed, or has gaps in it, that's created condensation which is further damaging insulation. It's also causing damage to the interior surface of the buildings, the ceiling tiles, floors, and carpets, they get pools of water and staining. Uh, much like the Quincy High School, the heating system, the HVAC system, Clifford Marshall needs to be conditioned as well, to, to a fifty-one thousand dollars for that system. The Delicay is an early childhood center, there's two incentive inducing units that attend into that, uh, cooling system. They each need to be replaced, uh, and the request for that is the twenty-five thousand dollars. Marimont School, um, was originally in the CIP, the funding is no longer is, appears that the school building, they're already picking up the cost of the substantial cost in that roof, so it's no longer the CIP. The Point Webster Middle School, uh, the building systems, same thing, need recommissioning for the HVAC system and controls, for seventy-nine thousand dollars. And there's a glycol chemical that's in the heating plant that needs to be replaced for forty thousand dollars. And, uh, miscellaneous schools collectively, as needed basis, there's a hundred thousand dollar request for a bating of asbestos and other pipe insulations. Uh, when there's a failure of a pipe, the partners need to commit, the old insulation has to be removed first before the companies can touch it. So it's just funding contingency across all, all school buildings for that hundred thousand Move on to the public safety buildings, and permission of the asking questions of the school before we advance.
One more?
What? Through you, Mr. Chairman. It's disappointing that we have to, in the post Honeywell, City of Quincy, talk about energy efficiencies and where we're doing it, and that was just, clearly, it's, it's these that are still identified, have done the behind-the-scenes tour with Mr. Pepperaro and some routine, but as I'm looking at this, Susan, it's all the energy efficiencies we were tackling in the last administration, so...
And in fact, because of the success of the battle in Honeywell, we're able to do this work, they have proprietary information. We would not at no time have been able to make these adjustments I need to be made. So glad to hear from you, because this, this is the post Honeywell world, somewhat addressing the case, and it just maintains the system going forward.
Suggestions continue in the conference, and then we'll open up for questioning.
Sure. I, the request for the public safety, uh, complex, it's a five hundred thousand dollar initial request, uh, it's certainly not for construction, but it's to conduct a feasibility study on combining of the, the two public safety structures, primary ones, police and fire, the ones in headquarters, um, the programming of it, in, uh, initial design of it, um, initial engineering, so that you, just to fund the study of that, that complex. So it's the preliminary design and preliminary engineering to allow that project, the planning aspect of that project to go forward. Uh, it would include some degree of, um, usage planning of the, of the land of EAW, uh, the best configuration of the roadways, things like that. We're going to continue on with the public safety buildings. Uh, Quincy Friday Park and Engine Eight in Germantown, the, uh, the floor is in disrepair structurally, the support to the floor, where the trucks are, but if there's anything, a danger of the apparatus, you know, causing a failure of the floors and having a collapse. So for the Germantown station, there's a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar request to shore up that floor. West Quincy has a similar problem, uh, it's thirty thousand dollars to have repair, some repair the slab. It's also considered the fact that the apparatus brings the world salt and deteriorates the concrete as well, so there's maintenance against that, and structural repairs occasioned by the damage done. And for the West Quincy, there's also, uh, exterior building repairs, the gutters and downspouts, and the trend to rotting out, causing moisture problems in the building. House Neck, uh, same thing, just reinforce the floor with the apparatus parts, uh, and restore it, seventy-five thousand dollars to fix the, the structure at the level to support that. Uh, Engine One, the headquarters, same, same issue, the concrete damage and stuff from the salt, and, uh, other damages to the floor, there's sixty thousand dollars to... other damages to the floor, there's sixty thousand dollars to repair. The floor where the trucks are stored, parked, partial roof replacement on the building, it's leaking, has failed, is not keeping it's integrity against the weather. Same thing, there's masonry work to that building, there's water infiltration and such due to the lack of maintenance on the exterior of that building. Engine seven in Swan, the exterior walls, that building is not masonry, it's a wood frame, all of the wooden exterior, and it needs some upgrades and repairs to two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. The Quincy Point Station, the window replacement project there, for twenty thousand dollars. Those original windows, none of them have failed, and are energy efficient. Okay, move on to the Thomas Crane Public Library buildings. The Richardson Building, the gem of our library systems, have the same H V A C issues. They need to have a upgrading and re-commissioning of the control system and the programming there for fifty thousand dollars. And the building's in need of a security system. There's difficulties accessing areas and prohibiting access in particular areas. The request for that is eighty-five thousand dollars, that's a public safety issue as well. And in a number of the areas of the library building, you know, and it was added to, the chip sheets, manchette sheets, there were carpet and stuff throughout the building, and that's quite a number of years ago, and those carpets have passed, they've taken a useful life. And there's a number of areas where it's causing bridges to tears and tripping hazards for the public that use that facility. The Wallace and Branson Library on Beale Street, they have to do some oil replacement and asbestos removal layup for twenty thousand dollars. Down in the Shore Library, the same thing, property in the area is fair with Department Florence Systems, so to replace that and to bait the tripping hazards and such right of the hour. So that's fifty thousand dollar request for down in Shore Library. That brings us to the proposed or possible animal shelter, dog park. At the Kennedy Center, the seniors' center on East Swan Street, the current H V A C system that was put in at the renovation of the building nine years ago, eight years ago at this point, all of those lines are in underneath the floor slab, and it's an unheated space that is subject to tidal flow and flooding of salt water, the deterioration that all happens. So there's a problem maintaining those heating and cooling lines, and they're failing, the supports are failing, and it's causing some problems. So this thirty-five thousand dollar request is designed, the reworking of that system, which the lines have gone overhead through the ceilings to each unit, rather than go under the floor slab and up to the units. That'll save money a lot more to eliminate all the failures. And behind the Kennedy Center, the area that used to be the schoolyard and the ballfield and all that, the mayor's visions restoring it to a passive recreation used for the seniors of the city. The walking trails, watching the pickleball and all that, all those things that they like to do to help foster senior limits. We've got some challenging environmental issues back there with wetlands and permitting issues. We've been back and forth with the D P W a few times, it's very, the D P, we're very supportive of the project, we just have to do it properly. We asked for additional funding for permitting and design of that park for the seniors, and that's a hundred fifty thousand dollar request. The cottage building, I think most people know this point, there's been a couple of instances where the snow has avalanched off the roof and crushed cars below. So thankfully, there's nobody in the cottage, so there's no pedestrians that got crushed, but I think taken out full cottage now. So there's requests there for thirty-five thousand dollars for additional snow rails on the roof, keep the snow up on top where it will melt. Unfortunately, they put the ice and water shield on the entire roof surface so we can put rails where we can lean them without causing the leak through the building. Another item, in the C I P, which is now not going to be funded through it, there's a new roof on the city called Nix Glass Building, a five hundred thousand dollar project that also gained funding through the repurposing of the school, we're going to do a project, so that's no longer a C I P request. The D P W garage, the main garage, the roof is leaking pretty substantially, it's causing damage to structure to the building, the steel roof deck is rotting because of constant infiltration of water. So this is a fifty thousand dollar request for that roof repair. I'm going to speak to a portion of the Mount Street piece, I think it's the side, it's the bulk, it's hard waiting him on that. I think that's it on the public safety portion.
Counselor Adams? No, just, I love, I really like what I see. Swan School, Sterling Middle School, talking about upgrading schools, my children have the pleasure of being able to go to the schools, to see them upgraded, and fixed, and in the shape that the taxpayers and Quincy deserves. I'm going to positively support this thing, thank you both.
Counselors, Counselor Liang?
I just wanted to see if you can clarify something for me here, if you can follow. So this item here is number C on our agenda, and it says to refer to pages three and nineteen if you just went there. Everything on here that has price attached to it totals seven and a half million dollars. Now, out of that seven and a half, there are three items on here, F, Gage, that we're going to talk about a little bit later, if you can continue me. That totals three million dollars. So now we're looking at four and a half million dollars for everything that you had to discuss, but the appropriation here is only for three million.
Right. I believe the elements I discussed total three million. There are other items in this book that are in the book because they're part of the C I P, but there's not a funding request for them tonight. But I believe the ones I discussed total the three million. And we actually do have a schedule of what those projects are, which we can distribute. So this is what particular rest requests we've got this time, and it does total two point nine eight four.
Could you say this probably, because from what was given to us as far as the agenda goes, and what's in here, with numbers in it, there's a million and a half that is not accounted for. So I was going to ask, if that million and a half is not accounted for, what in these items that have dollar amounts in estimate are going to be project that for? If you could sum that up, and maybe give us some clarification on my numbers, and that would help a lot.
Go ahead, send us out there.
Sure, three of us to Jim. Counsel, I think that the issue might be, Mr. Heinz could address at least one item that is a separate order. In his presentation, the public safety headquarters, the design money is a separate order for five hundred thousand dollars, and that's in that. As well, there are two items that are in the capital plan that have not been projected with financing as part of this appropriation request, because they are currently going to be requested of a separate appropriation that is in committee at this time, the two items for repurposing. So if you add those three things to the L A, you come to a one point five million, which I think there may be the discrepancy there.
Yes, fine.
Do you want to say, Counselor?
Thank you.
Counselor P, is that a financial model you have? What is that? Is that a budget?
It's not, it's simply a spreadsheet, spreadsheet. But Jack, I'm the first person I've seen to walk up to that voting with a spreadsheet, which is the only thing that I've been looking for for this entire document, this is a PowerPoint presentation. I would be much more inclined to support anything being presented to us tonight if it were in the form of a spreadsheet. I want, the numbers that I had up, Counselor Liang, also do not match up. This document does not match up to this bond authorization that's being requested. And I'd just like to see a resolution of those numbers. So that, things you just read to us is really nice, I almost fell asleep with a nice voice. This is otherwise a waste of time for me. Thank you.
So put that on hold and you can manufacture that.
I thought that the beginning of this was, we were going to put it on hold to ask for more information, but then we started taking votes, so I'm not sure where this is going for me.
Well, the request and information was specific to the particular letter item that was in front of us, so the requesting Mr. Heinz manufacture that spreadsheet with all the points he just covered, more than having support, the hold, and we can move forward with the discussion at a later date. Followed with twenty-seven, that's your wish?
Yes.
So place a sign on hold, Mr. Heinz, and be so kind, circulate that spreadsheet, give us some data, and we'll have the, the quid pro quo coming back.
So I just want to be honest, I can't take pride ownership, how it basically paid, but I will do good.
Thank you, Ms. Adams.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next speaker of the evening is actually, let me stir up water. Mr. Chairman, this request, sort of the build off of the two thousand eleven capital plan, we did a lot of flood relief projects, we got started on a lot of flood relief projects in West Quincy. So seawall repairs in House Neck, and insurance one, and some larger coastal improvements, such as graduating, long-term coastal adaptation plans. Working with the engineers involved in these projects, the estimated volume amounts get us to the next steps. Again, this is the seed money, this is not for any construction, this is to set us, get us to a place where we can come back hopefully with the whole project, the full options for these items. It's one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for engineering the next steps in West Quincy, one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for design and engineering, for pump station on Allison Street, which builds off Division Street pump station, two hundred fifty thousand dollars to update seawall assessment from the six per hours when it comes to seawalls, and begin the final engineering of some of these projects, particularly in Marymount and House Neck. We do, if anyone has any questions, the folks who share the movement in Karen, who did tremendous work on the first capital plan engineering of those projects, as well as gave emerging from time on, is also working on behalf of the city on some of these other projects, if you guys have any specific questions folks have.
Thank you, obviously. At the time, the administration brings forward seawall repair requests to benefit to one of the city only, not the majority of the rest of the city's seawalls on Longwall Street. With Mr. Murphy in the audience, if you could come forward, that would be great. In all the talks, you and I have a site that are in the, the Chickatown area, it's been a high loss area, who lives in Canada. We've had some, obviously since we did the assessment document, additional storm damage has been, just further deteriorated some of the seawalls. Do you have anything identified as kind of the next line target, do you be looking for with seawall repairs, is the next priority project? I know the original seawall assessment writes that, and then we had some storms and additional damage elsewhere, kind of that shifted the priority of that.
Yes, as we've talked, Counselor LaFors, the eight, five hundred mill feet extends from Shore Ave all the way along to the east end of Van Nuys Ave. We consider this the highest priority in the lowest weighting of the seawall structures in the city. So those are the projects that are important with your office, the mayor's office, and D P W prior to permitting.
Yeah, I think for, well, we may have a setback in that thing, especially the home damage of the home play, the seawalls essentially deteriorated, but you see close out and you see Marymount, Chickatown area really getting out of it at the moment, so I appreciate seeing that, being in priority with that, and it will, we'll have a positive evaluation.
Further questions for the engineers? Just a walker. Counselor Tom, is it?
Yeah, I'm returning my seat. Okay.
Probably some old ones we've done.
My apologies, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I was asking the auditor, could you tell us what happened to the Honeywell money that we got in the settlement, the judgment money that came back to the city? What do we do with that? Counselor LaFors question in the last presentation, kind of, we got me thinking of this.
The, I'd have to look into that, that Counselor, I thought that you were, you spoke to me earlier, I thought you were talking about...
Early, you mean like thirty seconds?
Correct, yes. I thought you were talking about the bond that we, the bond that we conferred and offered to the interest that we brought onto our books.
Because we bonded what, approximately thirty billion?
Correct.
And then?
And then we, we, as the interest that was brought over, and I don't have the exactly the wrong topic yet, but that was put in a specific fund that was to be used for energy and improvements, and I believe that the city will use, use portion of that with my own.
So maybe it's a question better posed to Mr. Walker. Thank you, Madam Honor.
You're welcome.
Would this, would the, would those monies for the, for the public buildings, you know, boiler for a school, you know, I think it's called a chiller, would that be money that we could access those funds, don't say that?
Counselor, there you, Mr. Chairman, I may already. Now, Counselor, I will certainly give you a list of what was funded, has been today through the Honeywell settlement.
How much was that, was it what, twelve million?
No, I believe it was a little bit less than that, about four million, I believe so.
Should have been twelve million.
I don't believe we're allowed to talk about that.
You're not. So, four million. This is the kind of thing that that money was intended to offset, right?
Absolutely, and I'm going to assume, without having specific projects in front of me, that a good number of these types of projects were done. Again, we talked to the unit about assessing all the city's needs and where we are, and we sort of didn't take into consideration the projects we have made in some of these buildings. And I think a lot of these projects, some small, some larger, probably some boilers in there, some of these very same things that we're talking about, asking for funding tonight, have been taking care of through the prior Honeywell settlement costs.
How do we utilize the green communities presently, if at all?
We did, again, without the benefit of that information directly in front of me, Counsel, I don't want to misspeak, but I know that that was a piece of the Honeywell funding. Again, we can provide you all that information, and how this overall plays into green communities. I think the more energy efficient we make our buildings, the closer we're going to get to our target goal, reducing energy consumption of worlds of twenty percent overall. And keep in mind, something that's not in this plan, which was done at no cost to the taxpayer, the installation of solar on more than a dozen of our city buildings, those projects have been turned on, as we speak, over the last several months, and starting to produce electricity. We're going to see substantial reductions in the amount of energy use in our buildings through those projects. And another item that's not on for this particular funding request, but that we've talked about, and you've talked about on a number of occasions, Counselor, the LED streetlights. We're going through that process right now. We expect to be back and forth this body in the fall with requests to appropriate funds for the LED conversion. So those are two big things that are in this plan, so to speak, but they are moving forward. Keep in mind, on the bigger picture, when we do a new school building, when we do Central Middle School, when we do Quincy High School, when we do Sterling Middle School, the efficiency that's created with a brand new building is just tremendous. Now there's some, some math there, because if we build a bigger building, we are going to use more energy. So we have some discussions to have with the green communities, folks, and that sort of thing when it comes to the energy efficiency of renewed buildings, but it's all making an impact.
And the, so the monies for, I mean, you raised two things, and I probably should have raised them earlier, so I was thinking about them, but we haven't approved the borrowing required for Sterling, which has a great deal because of reimbursement, so that was a no brainer, but also the LED upgrade of the streetlights, we haven't, that's something, those are both debt that we had to contemplate and argue with that July eighth, two thousand and fifteen, assessment or review of the city's finances by standard and force. Did you contemplate those, those two, I don't know, right?
No, but I would caution you, the standard and force is different than debt schedule or debt forecasting or debt models. They're not really looking at the full model, they're not looking at, you know, anything. They're taking basically the worst case scenario. So when someone on the call mentions, you know, yeah, we probably have extra amount to do in downtown, they just take that and put that into their report, it's not necessarily based on, it doesn't get to the level of detail that some of the things Cinder will talk about directly, or the actual models that you have. will talk about directly, or the actual models that you have in front of you, that they're taking a, for lack of a better term, a thirty-five-thousand-foot view of the city's financial condition. Um, I spent all, all night on my OPEP, and I don't know that anybody wants to get into that, um, and where, you know, I feel that, that this, this is coming from, um, but, um, you know, certainly, there, there's a bit of a difference between the modeling and, and, uh, the standard reports, especially that, that was July, that's the most recent full package of information that we have, uh, there have been subsequent credit reports, um...
So you're saying the, the credit reports that we've provided, with the completion of taking...
We certainly, absolutely, we can certainly provide any and all credit reports to the council if that's, that you desire this body.
Well, what's the point of giving us this one? I mean, this is...
That's included in a, that is a year-end, I don't know if it's a year-end actually, but that's the yearly...
Looks like fiscal year, June thirty-three, twenty fifteen.
Yeah, so that's the most recent one we have, when the next one comes out, which I imagine will be at the end of this month, they'll start to put that together, I don't know the timing of these, and my guess is it's probably sometime after the end of this fiscal year. Uh, we'll certainly provide that.
It's dated July eighth, two thousand and fifteen, so arguably, in the first weekend.
Sometime after, it'd be very well covered.
Okay, so that, I mean, now we, but, but you indicated it had been on the credit reports since July eighth, two thousand and fifteen, from the ratings agencies?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So whose decision was it to provide us with one from July of two thousand and fifteen, when there's been, there've been reports that are more up-to-date than that?
Again, counsel, that wasn't provided to you, um, because there was a credit report in there, that was provided to you largely because that is every penny of all of the debt that the city has. Within that document, the first cell was put together, the S is a credit report in there, but that is not a, a quote-unquote credit report document, that's a, that's a debt load document, that shows how, you know, every piece of, as you see in the debt schedule, every piece of that, the two thousand and sixteen, every piece of that fifteen-point-nine million, that's how, is in that book.
But if you recall, the reason why I went to this book, which went with reference by Mr. Kavanaugh, I said, I was asking the parameters that the, the rating agencies use to judge our debt and that is the responsibility, uh, and he was referencing the graphs, the charts and graphs in this document, and when I was, hopefully, getting my point across it, I was disappointed with the, uh, level of detail from the one paragraph letter from our financial consultant, and, and the comment from Mr. Kavanaugh that, you know, she doesn't want to provide things in writing in the future, he said, you can always refer to what was in this report. So I, I'm more concerned now than it was several hours ago, because there's more up-to-date information. I was, you were sitting right there, I was reading from this document, Counselor Liang was also referencing this document and questions, and this is the first time I'm hearing that there's been more recent credit report, uh, reports that are available to the administration than we haven't necessarily been provided with, you, what we're contemplating, taking on more debt.
That might have been the point where you said you wanted to do with one person at a time.
Okay. All right, well, now again with you, so...
It will certainly provide, that's part of, uh, the request of this body to provide any and all credit reports, credit evaluations, um, we can certainly do that, there's, there's absolutely no issue with that whatsoever. If we haven't provided that in the past, and that would have been helpful, you know, again, I'd like to think that we're, we're improving in the way that we're doing these things, because as you remember, there was some differences of opinion on how things were handled back in two thousand and eleven, and the months and years that followed, that what we presented tonight, you know, over the course of the last several weeks, you know, we think is a good faith effort to get to a better place, um, with this body. We need to do more in the information providing arena, absolutely, certainly not a problem to our...
I think in the grand scheme of counsel, mayor relationships, for as long as we've been in this form of government, there's probably always more a counsel than a mayor can do in terms of information providing. So I appreciate your willingness to, uh, to provide us with some additional information in that respect, um, as we consider this, and, uh, at that point, I'll, or at this point, I'll, um, cease any further questions and help to the chairman that we approach the eleven o'clock hour.
Motion to waive rule twenty-four.
There's a motion to waive rule twenty-four, and just, again, uh, process-wise, yes vote, continues to meet, no vote, basically would cease and pick up on the twenty-seventh, so, Madam Clerk?
If you would, call the vote.
Counsel Kane?
No.
Counsel Vaughn?
Yes.
Counsel Dunn? Counsel Harris?
Despite not having recovered from walking in the flag day parade, I'll say yes.
Counsel Hughes, wait, sorry, twenty-four, he's in, and your vote is to, and cease the meeting?
Correct.
Okay, no. The thought, Counsel Vaughn? No. Counsel Liang? No. Counsel Hump?
No.
Counsel Paul?
No. Okay, motion fails. Meeting adjourned at eleven P.M. We are doing a spot reschedule for, because obviously we have some more items, and we have a big air, the last of the council meeting is on the twenty-seventh of this month. The clerk has notified me that we have six-thirty P.M. Friday to the meeting, so we can pick up discussions. Appreciate all the department heads coming out and your, uh, your patience, and, um, thank my colleagues for your subs and the discussions this evening. At this point, I'll, uh, finance committee, here it flows.